Welcome, everyone. I now call the December 12th, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The City of Bothell provides the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely, and sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the agenda. A call-in phone number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say "here" when the city clerk calls your name. City Clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Zorn?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alder?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Councilmember Manki?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting, X and Ds, please speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. And first up is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to public engagement opportunities. We have the Park at Bothell Landing Conceptual Design Survey. You can help shape the future of the Park at Bothell Landing by taking a short survey beginning December 15th and save the date for Coffee with a Cop. You can join Bothell Police for Coffee with a Cop on Saturday, December 16th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at the Canyon Park Starbucks. Blood Drive at Bothell Police. Blood Works Northwest has an urgent need for donations. Give the gift of blood and sign up to donate on December 26th at Bothell Police Station. Get this flipped around right. I'm going to turn the meeting over to City Manager Stannert because we are going to recognize outgoing Councilmember James McNeil. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, councilmembers. I'm honored to get to go first and then turn things back over to the council to share some reflections on Councilmember McNeil. I just, in opening up, though, do want to just express gratitude, first of all. As the city manager here in Bothell, there were seven people who put confidence in me to be able to come lead this organization for the betterment of this community. And all seven are in this room tonight. We have Representative Doer with us here as well, and so it's a special thing, and I will always keep you with me with that in mind. There's two things that do come to my mind in terms of the leadership that you've brought to this community, and I've shared with you personally, and I'll share parts of it here publicly, that there are some classic examples of people who step up because they love where they live and they want to give back. And your story, and I trust we'll hear more pieces of it tonight from others, so I won't steal all the good stuff, but you stepping up and having an active role in leading in this community using your voice before you became a council member is admirable. To then follow up with that of running for office and giving your evening and your time and your love for this community, you've made a lasting impact, and we are all grateful for it. When I think about you, I think about your leadership voice. I think about being at the table, having questions come to me, having questions come to staff, that were always the right questions to ask. They were always insightful. And in particularly, you lend your experience to this council to be able to both ask questions and share things that you had learned in your years of service to make everyone else better. And I think that's such a great thing about leadership. But interestingly enough, when you're thinking about your leadership voice, is also your commitment to listen. And I know Councilmember Dodd and I were honored to be in the audience as you keynoted an event for Snohomish County leaders recently. And I will carry with me your words and your admonition to everyone in that audience that we have a responsibility not to just to hear a few voices, or not just to hear voices that we want to hear, but to genuinely go out and seek to hear from all people. And as I think about the work that we have to do in Bothell, that reminder is one that I won't have to write down because I'm going to remember it, and I'm going to hear your voice saying it. And I appreciate you demonstrating that and sharing personal stories at that event and with me privately as well of how you've employed that, and even when it's difficult. And again, that is a mark of a great leader, to be able to do the things that matter most, no matter if it's easier or it's hard. I'm thankful that your children are here tonight to be able to see this. I'm thankful for the sacrifice they made as a parent myself and knowing that having a hobby that brings you to City Hall once a week for evening meetings is a family commitment. So thank you for lending Bothell your dad as well. On behalf of the organization, we do have a reminder, if you ever forget, that you served this community well. We do have a plaque in your honor. There's a few other things tonight, but I'll come up and hand this to you, and we're going to take a recess after this, and I know we'll have a moment too, but I just want to, again, say thank you. On behalf of the entire executive leadership team, we appreciate the service you've given to our community. Thank you.
I'm going to open it up to council if anybody has anything to say to Councilmember Councilmember Zorn, thank you for going first. Nobody ever wants to go first.
Okay, so I had to write this down because just thinking about you leaving, I would forget it all. So, thank you. I've known you for almost 10 years. You are resolute, kind, uncompromising with your core convictions, and I really appreciate that about you. You vote for people, not agendas. No one cares for the people of Bothell who call Bothell home like you do. I mean, I like to think I do, but you hold my feet to the fire, and I've appreciated that. There can be no person here on the dais that can be all things to all people, but you bring an insight from experience that's not lived by anyone on the dais, both personally and professionally, and I'm going to feel that loss, and the city's going to feel that. You're going to be missed. You're leaving big shoes to be filled. And so our love and our prayers and our thanks go to you as you continue to make your part of the planet a better place. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, James. I've worked with you the least of everyone up here, but I've really appreciated the chance to get to know you, to work on stuff for the city, but also just to talk about, I think about talking about our families when we were in Olympia in February and getting to introduce you to my son, also named James. And just, I really appreciate the chance to partner up, and I know that you're not going anywhere, and you'll still keep in touch as we look at the future in Bothell, and I really look forward to continuing to work together.
Your timing on that comment was impeccable.
Thank you, Mayor. Just trying to think about what to say tonight. There's a lot of words, but what really resonated with me as I was driving down here tonight was how much I appreciate you. I appreciate you for many, many reasons, but I think the three that really stand out the most to me is, one, you say what you mean and you mean what you say. That's very rare these days. It's very rare that somebody has convictions and stands for them, and you think about the city, you think about the people who live here, and as Jean said, you don't come with an agenda, you come with the agenda of the people. And I just, I just really want to thank you for that. That's something that you impressed upon me when I first came on the dais two years ago. That leads me into the second thing I appreciate you for. I appreciate you for coming alongside me. New councilmember, so much to learn. And you really showed me and helped me learn what I needed to know to do this job. And having mentors, having people like you come alongside new councilmembers like me really helps us get up to speed quickly and be effective at this work. So, I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for the eight years you've served on this dais. I watched you before I came to council, and not just on this dais, but in the regional conversations that you've been a part of. You've really helped bring Bothell out of our city and out to regional conversations and brought us to the table to advocate for the things that the city needs, these residents need. So, I think those are the big three things. I also want to say thank you for giving up time away from your boys. I think you've been an incredible example of what it means to be a leader in the city, and I know your boys appreciate that. They may not tell you all the time, but they're watching you. They've been watching you for the last eight years, and you've been a dad to be proud of, and I hope that I can be the same for my kids when I leave the dais. So, thank you very much. I appreciate you. I'm going to miss you like hell, and I know we're going to keep talking frequently and still be in community together, but I just want to thank you.
Councilmember Alder?
Well, Councilmember McNeil, it has been an honor to serve with you, and I'm really grateful that you stepped up to serve in community at a time when we really needed your voice, we really needed your perspective. And I think you raised the bar for councilmembers for service in our community, and I really thank you for that. I'm grateful for the time we've been able to serve together and for the perspectives that you've brought and shared. So, thank you, and I'm really looking forward. I think you'll still say stuff sometimes and show up and be involved, and, you know, every voice matters in our community, and your voice definitely matters. So, I'm glad that you'll stay connected, involved, leading and serving in this community. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think, I know you'll be involved, and your voice will be, you forced us to have some tough conversations, which are really good conversations to have and are much needed, way long overdue, and we're going to miss those tough conversations. Hopefully, you'll keep us on our toes moving forward, but I very much appreciate it. Very much appreciate you stepping up earlier in your career and continuing, and again, thanks to the boys for allowing you to be part of this, because it's not easy. It's not easy, boys. It's not easy. So, thank you. I very much appreciate you.
James, your leadership in Bothell has had a huge impact that we are all better for. As I was thinking about what to say today, I was like, okay, what do I talk about? And there's a few things that you've done that will reverberate for a very long time, even before you were elected and after you were elected, being involved in the effort to secure the former Wayne Golf Course for years to come. Like, that's a thing we have forever now. Thank you. You, along with Davina Doer and Andy Rayham, both of whom are here tonight, really changed the direction of Bothell for the better. And at a time when we really needed it, the three of you stepped up, and you met the moment, and you were the people we needed. Thank you. You brought to light some of the issues with NPRSA and the needing for funding to get that as part of the levy. And because of your work and that levy passing, the senior center's going to be in a much better place forever. And I think finally, and when I think of you, the thing that I think the most of is, you know, before you were here, Bothell had really abdicated its voice in the greater region, and we basically just sat here and did our own thing, and you changed that. And you have served on the SCA Board, the PSRC Executive Board, you've chaired the NPRSA Board most recently, and like, way too many, like, literally for everybody, that's, it's a lot more than that. He's done a ton of work regionally, and that's been a huge boon to Bothell that we benefit from on an ongoing basis. These aren't small things. These are big things, and your record of service should make you proud and should make your family proud of you. Thank you. And I have this, actually, SCA gave you a thing as an outgoing board member. Hey, you can hear me right? They gave you this plaque. I just wanted to make sure you got that, and I'm going to turn it over to you in a minute, but there's a couple other people that want to say things tonight, so hang tight. We've got a couple folks that want to speak tonight that, that served with Councilmember McNeil up here. Representative Doer, do you want to go say a few words?
Gosh, it's amazing how quickly you forget how everything works here. James, you are the last of the 2015 trio that turned the tide in Bothell and made the impossible possible. Saving Wayne Golf Course would never have happened without you, and so you have left an indelible mark in Bothell and this community. That first year was really tough, but we became stronger for it and did some amazing The clustering ordinance in Fitzgerald was among the hardest things. You began representing Bothell in a regional level, which hadn't happened before, and I think you and I had lots of competition on who got to be on what board. We did the Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy and the Public Safety Levy, and I'm a million things that I've probably forgotten because it's so easy to remember what we didn't do, but we did some wonderful things together. Public service is a difficult road, and sacrifices are made, especially with our families. And I want to thank you and your family for making those sacrifices with me. Our kids were so little when we started, and now, look at them. So, I'm getting weepy, so I'll stop speaking, but I just want to thank you for everything you've done for Bothell and for turning the tide together all those years ago.
And we have a former mayor, Andy Rayham, would like to say a couple words as well.
All right, there we go. James, I'm proud to call you brother. James, like everybody said, we went through a lot together. He came, I almost wasn't going to run, and then James and Davina showed up, and I ran for a second term, and we, that's how it all started. And I remember when I first met James, I was trying to remember this for you. You probably don't remember, but it's stung into my head, and it fits in with what other people have said, is that it was during the Wayne Golf Course issue, and I was the only one on council that's even in this room, and there was, you know, you can go back and read the paper and see like what really kind of the blow-by-blow, but the thing about James that was great is when he came to a council meeting and then we talked afterwards, and he wasn't sure about me yet. I think he was kind of like, you're one of those seven, I don't know. And he said, he said to me that it's not that you can't sell the golf course, I want to just have the community to have a voice in it. And, yeah, so that resonated with me, changed the course of this council. It changed the culture of the city. I mean, we can keep going on and on, but James, you had a huge role in all that, and know that. And it was an honor serving with you, and I no longer live here, so it's kind of interesting. This is the first time I've been back to hear how you'll still be involved in the community, and I bailed. So, but Anacordis is beautiful. If anybody who's interested, it's get off the ferry road, and it's unbelievable. But anyways, so, and then, yes, your boys sacrificed a lot. Not only was he here, but James would be, I don't know, what, all those, he coached football, lacrosse, I think Little League, baseball back then, too, like James did that. And then he did the serving on all the boards. I think one time he had 13 boards, and we were like, that's enough, dude. Like, you need to start, like, but he liked it, and he did a really good job. When I started on the council, I went to regional meetings, and they're like, Bothell, and I was shocked that somebody showed up. So, you definitely changed that reputation for our city, and if you're not engaged in the councils of other cities when they do regional things, I think it was David Baker said, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, and we were on the menu for very many meals, and that's changed. So, and that, I think that's all I have to say. Look forward to you coming up and voting with me, and take care.
And after all that, we're going to turn it over to you if you've got a few words to say, councilmember.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I try to keep my composure, but this journey started for me 10 years ago, 10-plus years ago. And yes, my kids were, my boys were young, my daughter was young, and now I have 15-year-olds, 29-year-old daughter, and two grandchildren. So, my family has grown. But when I got into this, when I ran for office, I didn't run for my own beliefs, for my own agenda. I ran for the community, and I did that because I was part of the community, and I felt like I wasn't being heard. And so, instead of pounding my fist on the table, I decided to get into the race and make my community better. And I hope by my leadership, not only here within Bothell, but around the region, I've proven that we can do it for the right reasons. It doesn't have to be about us. It has to be about our entire community. We're not all the same. We come from different backgrounds, we've lived different experiences, lived experiences. There's a lot of political toxic issues that go on within our community, but the one thing that I've tried to do is open, listen, open mind to everybody, and to make my decisions from the heart. When I first ran, former Mayor Rayham told me, says, no matter what you do as a council member, every decision you make, make it from your heart, not from a position of power. And I can tell you today that every decision I ever made from this dais was just that, from my heart, from my community, not from me personally. And so, it can be done, and I'm hoping that this council and the councils after us, because we're only here for a short period of time, will continue to do that on behalf of the people of Bothell. We've done a lot of great work together. There's a lot of great work left to do. I think, you know, the mayor spoke about the senior center and the work the community did to ensure that our senior center stayed open. That's amazing. That wasn't just us. That wasn't me. That was the community wanted that. The former Wayne Golf Course becoming a park, the community wanted that. And so, if we can continue to keep that mindset about community being together, we can do great things. And I hope, as I depart, we won't forget, the single most important piece of our community right now is the future of our community, which is our youth. And today, our youth are struggling more and more. There's more and more drug issues and things, kids getting in trouble, social media, all the toxic stuff is around them. And so, I hope that this council, our city, will do everything in our power to continue and uplift the youth in our community and build the services that they're going to need so that we can fulfill our dream of becoming an all-inclusive welcoming community, not just for the seniors, not just for the normal, the youth, for everybody. So, I'm proud to have served for eight years my community. There's a lot of sacrifice that goes into this position, and if you do it for the right reasons, you'll look back, and I truly will, it's been an honor. I also want to close with city staff. You are the backbone of this community. We sit up here, we make decisions, but you run the city. And without you, without the things that you do on the day-to-day to keep us all working and going and moving and going in the right direction, the city would peril. So, I want to make sure you, Kyle, city manager, and everybody on your team knows how much I truly appreciate all the work and effort you've done. I don't know what I don't know when I'm not sitting here, but having sat here now for eight years, you guys do run this city. To the police department, we've been through a lot together. There's been a lot of things said, good and bad, about the police department, but the one thing that I can say is, chief, you've been steadfast, and your communication has been open and welcoming, and that's been to me. And I want to say that many members of my community see you and hear you and appreciate the work that you're doing within our community. So, I want to say thank you on behalf of me for keeping us safe. To the fire department, amazing, the things that you do, the public safety, all that stuff that you guys do to help our community keep us safe, and I can tell you firsthand, I've experienced it when you come to my place because I had a heart condition. The professionalism, the speed once you get there is amazing. We are in a region, and I will tell you firsthand experience, my son suffered something in Philadelphia. It took 22 minutes to get an ambulance. We're blessed to live in a community where it's five to seven, whatever it might be, three to five. Your service to our community is unparalleled. Thank you for all your service. Parks, it all stems in parks. Get people outside, keep them healthy. I'm proud to say I'm down 62 pounds in the last six months, so I'm very proud of that, but it's being active and being outdoor, so let's continue to keep our parks open and moving. So, and council, it's been, it's been a challenge on some occasions, but I want to tell each and every one of you, I love you, I appreciate you, and I see you. And no matter if we disagreed on anything, to me, that doesn't matter. It matters that we have communication and we talk through things. So, hopefully, I have the opportunity to talk to each and every one of you when I'm not on the dais, and you really get to know me and who I am and what I stand for. So, thank you for your service to the community. Thank you, community. It's been an honor and a privilege, and with that, mic drop.
Another translation for mic drop is cake. We are going to break. It is 6:26 right now. We will be back here at 7 o'clock to continue the meeting, and we're going to take a break and have a little party.
And councilmembers, if you'd stay in the proximity of Councilmember McNeil, we'd love to get a group photo, too.
Welcome back. Seems like a strange thing to say after we've all been talking in the lobby. The city has accepted public comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but upon the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Before I call on names, I'd like to say that public comments shall be limited to topics concerning current, future, or requested city projects, actions, programs, plans, and regulations. Comments not pertaining to these subject matters are not germane and may result in the speaker's comments being suspended. When your three minutes start, the light at the dais will turn green. At one minute left, it will start blinking, and at 30 seconds left, it will turn yellow. The first part, we have received one written comment from Pat Pierce, who wrote in regarding the Bothell Historical Museum lease agreement, and we have two people signed up this evening to speak. The first one is Mary Evans, the seventh. If you'd like to go to the podium, you'll have three minutes.
I'm Mary Evans. I'm president of the Bothell Historical Museum Board of Directors and represent the members and volunteers of the museum. I am also speaking for some of our members who are here tonight. If those members would please raise their hands and keep them up while I finish. Tonight, you have on your consent agenda a request for an amended lease agreement for one year, which allows us to continue negotiations with the city for a longer-term lease. We are nonprofit. We have no paid staff. We represent Bothell's past, the homesteaders. You can imagine people having 130, 160 acres. You can see the plots at the Hannan House and see for yourself what was long ago. We have the loggers, the farmers, the blacksmiths, and more. We represent families who, when they discovered 15 students taking canoes to Woodinville for school, developed, petitioned, and developed the first school district. We remain committed to sharing Bothell's past throughout this city, state, country, and beyond borders. This year, we had visitors from India, Russia, China, Chile, Argentina, Brazil, and many more. If you have not visited us, please email us at bothelmuseum@gmail. This is an option available to anybody, not just city council members, and request a private tour. We do this for 1 to 15 people. We set it up according to your schedules. This information is also available on the Bothell Kenmore Chamber website. This information is also available on the Bothell Kenmore Chamber website. We look forward to continue working with the city.
Thank you. Next, we have Ann Agard, who is joining us virtually. Ms. Agard, can you hear us? You're muted, Ms. Agard.
Hello?
Hello?
There's a problem with the recording.
Ms. Agard, sorry, we had some technical difficulties. Can you hear us? You're muted again.
Hello?
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 Ann, we're having some technical difficulties. I'm going to push you out and bring you back in, if you'd just bear with us for a moment, please.
She may have her outgoing speaker too loud, and that's what's reverbing.
So... I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
She may have her outgoing speaker too loud, so she mutes.
Ann, can you turn your mic down a little bit?
Not her mic, but her speaker, her outgoing speaker on her computer.
Can you turn it down a little bit? And then you need to unmute your mic. There you go. Can you try that? Let me see if I can try and get her back in, if we can do it.
Is there anybody else sent up for public comment that we could move ahead?
That we have. However, if anybody's in the audience, please step to the podium, give your name, and you'll have three minutes, and we'll try to get Ms. Agard back in.
The one with the big sign? Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Deputy Mayor, I'm here to thank you for being brave enough to serve our community. Last night until 2:00 a.m., I attended a contentious city council meeting in Kenmore as someone who splits my time in both cities and cares deeply about both communities and about making and creating community spaces for people who are struggling, and specifically, in this case, struggling with homelessness. I heard dozens of people oppose the amazing work that had been done to bring 100 units of 30% AMI housing to Bothell Way. By 3:00 a.m., the council voted against this project because the rancor, bitterness, mistrust, misinformation, and fear was still too high in the community. This was excruciating to witness as someone who's paid attention to the work and the potential project from the beginning, and knowing the uniqueness and specialness of the awards of funding that had been worked for and received. I'm here tonight to ask you to please learn from what I witnessed. I respect the work that each one of you has been called here to do and would not want to see what happened there happen here. The anger at the city council and staff that was unleashed was unnerving at best. It seems there is a unifier. No one wants drug use or homelessness, but the gap is the how and the where to fix it. Maybe our city could have open community conversations on this. How does Bothell, the current residents, want to be a part of solutions? Some people think affordable housing is okay, just not for homeless people. That's a little confusing for me. Can our city educate current residents about homelessness and how our city can be a part of the solution? Can we talk about support systems for people in our area? I want to be part of a city that works for solutions to these local and regional issues and really understands that ignoring it doesn't make it go away, and it certainly doesn't make us a healthier community. Much of the madness came from people who didn't know anything about the project until this week and accused the council and city of being non-transparent. Apparently, they hadn't received an all-city mailer or read weekly city council agendas or the city newsletters, but somehow they were able to communicate to 300 people online to sign a petition. And we know this is an ongoing struggle to communicate, communicate, communicate. I don't think anyone has cracked the code that makes sure all people get factual information, even when they don't know they need it, so they don't just show up when it's too late or they're too angry, but please keep trying. I didn't agree with much of what I heard in those hours of testimonies, but it was educational to see the gap. I'm such an optimist that I think that gap can decrease, but the ways a community talks about tough issues has to change. Please always strive to keep detractors and stakeholders in conversations, so at the very least, they have the facts, whatever the topic or the issue is. Having broad support on tough solutions is way better and stronger than having two sides. Thank you for your work and what you do for this community. And by the way, I'm Kristin Joyner, and I reside in Bothell. I don't think I said that.
Thank you.
And your timing is impressive.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? If so, please step to the podium, state your name. Okay. Please state your name. You'll have three minutes.
Yes. My name is Sue Keenest. I live in Bothell, 16836 Hanan Fourth Avenue Northeast. And I was president of the Bothell Museum for 40 years, and I think the current board members have spoken about this subject of the new lease. But I just wanted to give you a quick history that some of you might not know, some of you do know, but the Bothell Museum was, well, the Park at Bothell Landing got started with a King County Forward Thrust grant, and it was used to help move the first building to the park. And through the years, the Bothell Museum used several historic grants totaling thousands of dollars to help the city and public works and parks in the maintenance of the buildings, such as the cabin, even the little cabin had an agreement with the city of Bothell because the cabin was donated to the city by the Beckstrom family. And it was in 1993, and it says, whereas the owner is dedicated to said log cabin to the city's historic park at the Bothell Landing. City shall, at its own expense, apply preservative, maintain caulking, and keep it in a good state of repair, that it shall never be painted with a pigmented paint or other finish other than clear preservatives. The owner hereby conveys the ownership of said log cabin to the city in consideration of the above promises. So the museum has been involved with preserving the buildings through grants because Bothell Historical Museum is a nonprofit organization, and we could apply for historic grants, which then help the city do some maintaining. I know this subject is going to be delayed for a year, but I would suggest to solve some of these problems by putting together a meeting of all the parties to address some new solutions. The original lease agreement and contract between the two parties should be honored to create a better and more effective relationship. Let's problem-solve with some creative ideas. There's a lot of people that have ideas on how we can coordinate this. In conclusion, the Park at Bothell Landing is and always has been a city-of-Bothell gem. Let's make it sparkle again. And I'm glad to see that about the 15th, that we're going to get public input on some of the park design. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all I have. Is there anybody else in the audience here tonight or in the virtual audience that wishes to speak? If you're in the virtual audience, please use the raise hand function. I will say that Ms. Agard has dropped off the meeting. So that is all I have.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next, I'm going to kick it over to City Manager Stannard for the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items tonight, both of them on the theme of really preparing for a short break as we wrap up meetings for this year and look forward to coming back in January. So both are, we don't want to leave cliffhangers. The first update is to close the loop on something that we spoke about back in October, which was, we did some community feedback process on the, what we'll affectionately call Lot EF&amp;G. So we were looking at some lot activation options. As you recall, staff conducted an RFP earlier this year and selected a firm called The First 40 Feet, which looks at the first 40 feet back from the sidewalk and the first 40 feet up from the ground on how to activate space. Partnering with them, there were four concepts that were put together and sent out to the community. We ended up having 1,800 response, or over 1,800 responses to that survey, and it really shows that there was a lot of energy, interest, and a lot of great ideas on how to potentially put together an option for temporary activation of that site. The survey was in the field between October 16th and November 10th, and as you know, we did advertise it and got great responses. Staff has recently received the results of that in the last week and are going over the responses to the four concepts. And then there was also one open-ended question on each, related to each, or the overall survey, for people to give us more feedback than maybe just saying, I prefer this versus that didn't do. So we're going through that right now and anticipate being able to bring back more of the results in February as we report out next steps. As a reminder to both the council and anyone who's watching at home, there isn't set aside funding or, you know, a budget that we have to stay within or even have for that project, but what we want to do is have the conversation of saying, here's what we heard from the community, and then we can find solutions to if there's an interest in moving an idea forward. And I guess lastly, I'll just say, too, because a number of people who I spoke with in person were saying, well, I liked this about that option, but that about the other option, yeah, those, the ideas or the visions were really not to lock us down to it has to be one of these four things, but really to get people to be able to respond to, what did you like about each of those things? What did you not like? And there's the opportunity to put together an idea based on that, but not of that. So hopefully, we have some fun conversations looking ahead in 2024, and there will be more to come on that. The second update is, there's a memo in your packet for a staff report that we are going to be with you tonight to talk about the Human Services Community Needs Assessment. Earlier this year, when council adopted your vision, there was a focus area of building Bothell's beloved community, and within that, one of the priorities that was envisioned from the council in order for us to enact that was to develop a human services plan. A first step of that human services plan was for the council to invest, you actually did this before the priorities came out, in a position to help us with that. And that, one of the main deliverables for it was to conduct a human services community needs assessment. That'll help inform the plan, and there's a lot of work going on. So we wanted to share a little bit of that work with you and know what's happening and also how this is going to interact with council going forward. So with that, welcoming to the table tonight, we do have our Assistant City Manager Becky Range, and she is joined by Anand Mantra Pragada, who is our Human Services Coordinator, and he is going to be telling you a little bit more about the work that he's doing. Anand, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. My name is Anand, and I'm the Human Services Coordinator for the city, and I'm here today to share a little bit about our Human Services Community Needs Assessment. We are not requesting any council action at this moment as we are just sharing the progress of our project. I want to utilize my time today to talk a little bit about our project goals, the timeline that we came up with, and the public engagement plan that we developed with our consultant. The, our project's purpose is to identify Bothell's human services gaps, needs, and challenges, and develop a strategic plan that provides measurable recommendations along with goals on how to address these challenges. We started off the project in November 2023, last month, where we finalized the community engagement plan and held a human services forum here at the council chambers with our local and regional human services partners. From December to March 2024, our consultant will engage our community, collect quantitative data from multiple data sources, and study human services initiatives from cities across King County and Snohomish County. From March to May 2024, we will analyze the data that we collected and create a draft plan, present this draft plan to our community and our partners, and collect this and present it for feedback. Once we have incorporated our feedback, we will create the final strategic plan and deliver it by June 2024. Lastly, our public engagement plan will consist of informational interviews and workshops with our service providers and local partners, focus groups with our community members, and an online survey to reach our wider community. We plan to also have a paper-based survey, along with a survey that's developed in Spanish and Portuguese, amongst other languages, to ensure that we're casting as wide as a net as possible. Once again, no council action. This is just to share updates on our community-based assessment. Thank you all so much.
Does anybody have any questions? Oh, Councilmember Dodd?
It's not a question. I'll keep it quick. I just want to say, thank you for being here. I know we've all expressed many times that we're very excited to see you coordinating this work, and thank you to the staff who are doing this work before you, kind of piecemeal with their other jobs. That was such a big ask, so I'm sure they're glad you're here. I know we're glad you're here, so thank you again. We're really excited to hear more, and thank you for the update.
And I'll just echo that. As this was happening, I was, oh, I was just thinking to myself, this is so wonderful that this is just happening, and we appreciate it, and we're really looking forward to the results and kind of what our learnings can be and how we can take it from here. So just know that we're really looking forward to it, and we appreciate the work a lot. Councilmember Aldrich?
I was going to save this for council committee reports because I do serve on the Human Services Committee for the city, and I was able to be in attendance, but it was a great event. I think you made a really good choice with the consultant that has hired, and it was just really interactive and engaging, where everybody was able to really reflect on some big questions, like what are Bothell's needs? What's your, you know, how do you think we could do better? You know, what's your kind of end goal, and how could, what could we do in the next three years? And those are the types of big questions that I think cities should be asking. And I'm just grateful that there were so many people in our community who were there to give that feedback and that I was able to be a part of it. So thank you. Like others have said, like, we missed having you here before we knew you, and we're very glad that you are here. So thank you.
All right. I think we're good. Thank you so much. City Manager, anything else?
No, that was the two items.
Fantastic. Next up is council committee reports, community reports, and conversations. Councilmembers?
I just gave my committee report. Thank you.
Councilmember Zorn?
Brief conversation. I wanted to put something out there for the pondering. Can't do it this year, but maybe next year. And I guess this might be something we would put into our policy manual, but consider noodle whether or not we should do oath of office, because other cities do this, on our last meeting of the year. And I understand that if you're going to save getting, you know, choosing the mayor for the beginning of the year, you can choose someone to be the interim during, what, let's say, December 12th through?
It would be somebody to serve as the chair of the meeting.
Chair of the meeting.
For that one meeting.
There you go. Chair of the meeting. But any rate, but it would be, I think it might, there might be some perks to doing oath of office on the last meeting of the year. Just think about it.
What are the perks? I'm just curious. I don't know.
Okay, this is going to sound very shallow. We could be meeting January 9th. Okay, this is going to sound very shallow. We could be meeting January ninth instead of January second. It's just, you know, that's the obvious one.
It, it's an interesting idea, because I see like, like other cities and the school board sign in their folks a little bit earlier than we do. I think the only thing is I would want to make sure that we have time to have like the celebration we had today for Councilmember McNeil, so that we don't, you know, mix our streams too much. But I'm not opposed. I just want to, you know, think about all the logistics.
Yeah, no, that, that went through my mind. And talking with people who already do this, they said, yeah, you can do it all in one fell swoop. So, but yeah, you're right. That, that concern went through my head as well.
I guess my question on that, I've, I've, I will admit, I've been jealous that other cities have already been able to do their swearing ins, and it looks all very official and, and celebratory, and, and, and that wasn't necessarily our experience up here, because that's not how we've done it. But I guess my question is, how does that work if people's terms don't start until January first? And like, I don't know if the, like, a lawyer or a judge might be able to weigh in on that one, but I just have questions.
Yeah, and I can follow up with more precise, or one of, one of us at the table can follow up with more precise language. But having gone through this in other times in my career, I believe the RCW does allow for, there's like a, a timing of certain, a number of days, or at the last regularly scheduled business meeting of the year, I think is what the RCW reads, allows for the oath of office. Again, like, one of the arguments that has been used, that I've, I've heard is too, is that then, you know, come the stroke of midnight, January first, everyone has taken oath and they're, they're in. The reality is, is if we had a really bad New Year's Day and we needed council to take action, we would also administer the oath, and then we'd still have a ceremony as soon as we could. But yeah, there is a, there is a prescribed timing in state law, and we would, we would follow that. But having it be, like, we couldn't say, oh, well, we'll do it on the first meeting of December, so that then the last meeting of December is for honoring. It would need to be on the last week of the year, or last meeting of the year.
Go for it. Thank you. Just one quick update. We had our last Snohomish County Tomorrow Meeting of the Year, where we received a quick update from the Housing Affordability Regional Task Force. Very, very short presentation, didn't receive much information, other than that they have concluded their work and they'll be coming back in the new year with next steps for Snohomish County Tomorrow. So that'll be exciting for, for our team as we move into 2024. We also got a quick update from the folks handling the opioid settlement plan, kind of quick briefing on that, similar to the documents that we signed. Snohomish County is receiving some money for the opioid settlement. One interesting piece of fact that I learned during that short session was that a lot of, a lot of community members who are using drugs are using more than one drug. They're using something like fentanyl, which is depressing their system, and then they're using a second drug to bring them back up so that they can accomplish, you know, regular tasks in life. So that was disheartening to hear, but also it's good to know as, as council members, the struggles of, of certain community members. So more is going to come back on that and how those funds will be spent. And then we got a quick update from the Snohomish County Health Department on food and restaurant permitting and how that works. And it was interesting to learn about the reciprocity between the various counties. So you don't have to go county by county to get a food health or a worker, food worker permit. You can get one, and it's honored by all counties. So that was the balance of that meeting. And next year, Snohomish County Tomorrow will be transitioning a little bit. There's going to be more regional decision-making responsibility, similar to PSRC. So they did not talk about what that will look like, but it will be changing the way that that, that organization operates. So that's exciting. All right. Next up is projected agenda discussion. Is there any item council members would like to bring up? Good, because it's the last meeting of the year. Next up is consent agenda. I would love to take a motion.
I move to approve consent.
Second.
All right. I got a motion from Councilmember Mankie and a second from Councilmember Dodd to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember Mankie?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Thank you. All right. Next up for Agenda Bill 23202, we have a study session to update and seek direction on findings regarding the evaluation of Bothell's future fire service City Manager?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, council. This is a study session that was continued from last week. So people have had a, a few opportunities to read the materials. As you'll recall, back on June sixth, staff was last before you to have a conversation to see if council was interested in initiating work to do an evaluation of fire services, or doing a fire service study. As we talked about at the time, we, we recognized that there have been past conversations in the, in the city about fire service, and it's usually been around looking at an option, a specific option. And what we proposed was to come back with, to council with all options that, to quote the deputy city manager, all legal options, which I appreciate. There's no traps here. The, behind this, I think what we are also all experiencing, and again, we see this in other areas, that, that community has concerns about, or interest in, or questions, as well as it informs a lot of conversations we have, is that Bothell has been a growing and expanding community. And as we see both an increase in the population and the complexity of our community, that the buildings that we have that are taller and more dense, there's also then just a natural challenge of making sure that we have the best response that we can in terms of providing fire and emergency services to the community. It's an important job. It's a job we take seriously. And bottom line, we're always going to be looking for what is the best way to provide that service. We, we look to be proactive. We look to make sure that we're providing exceptional service. With that, as we embarked on this study, that was a big core piece of the work that was being done, is this is not an effort to save money. This is not an effort to shift resources. Bottom line is, the question that we're looking to ask is, what is the option that's going to provide the best emergency services to the Bothell community? What I also want to point out is, is that while we've been having these discussions, I want to thank the council and note that we have not stopped investing in what we have now. So just because there might be an alternative future, we want to make sure that we continue to take care of what we have. Some of the steps that we've had in that has been, council recently took action to approve funding to construct a training tower, which was something that was originally designed for Station 42, and that has been, that has happened. It's been a part of the budget. Also, this summer, council took action to increase staffing so that we could have an A-Car stationed at Station 45 with the goal objective, and we're seeing results of improving response times for aid. So these are our great things. The other thing I want to note is that we also hired an interim fire chief to lead through this time, and I'm really appreciative of that. I think his experience leading fire departments and his experience and respect throughout the region has served Bothell well. So again, another investment that we've made that is just making us better and better. So for tonight, while no action is being sought from council, you're not being asked to pick what do you want to do. You can certainly express if you have a, a strong preference. What we do intend to come back is, again, to provide that full menu of options. And then there's also, for this study session, sometimes there's just a question. Tonight, what you're going to see is there is a proposed staff recommendation of how we might move forward. And that's really intended to be conversational of, again, if we give you all options, it's kind of tough to say, so what do you like or what don't you like? So instead, we've given a, kind of a model for, to pick out. But we really are interested in walking away tonight with the intention of having feedback from council of what, what would you like us to pursue? And with that, we would come back in January with more details on a smaller set of, of options. So in short, it's to take you from the world to some digestible bites. That's our goal. With that, I am going to turn things over to our fire chief, Mark Reisen, and to our deputy city manager, Tony Call. Take it away.
Thanks, City Manager Standard, and thank you, council, mayor, deputy mayor, and council members, for letting us come and talk to you tonight about the work we've been doing on the fire service study. With that, it works. We are here, as City Manager Stan mentioned, to kind of take a review of some of the work that we've done. We want to talk about where we've been, what we've learned, some of our findings. Then, as noted, we do have a, you know, a staff straw, person straw, to, a proposal for you to think about how we might be able to narrow the scope moving forward. Our agenda tonight is Chief Reisen's going to take us through a fire service overview. We'll both spend some time talking about the direction we received from council and the work we talked about last June. We'll take some time and update the work and the findings that we've had, and then finally put forth a, a proposal to all of you for your consideration. So with that, Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Again, thank, thank you to the council for, A, continuing to invest in the fire department. I really appreciate that support, but also for spending some very, very valuable time on this topic. So extremely important one. The mission of the fire department, in a nutshell, is a whole bunch of people show up every day and do a really spectacular job of protecting our community through education, prevention, and then operationally by going out and responding to calls every day. And I've been here six months now, and with an outsider's perspective, I want to assure you, you're very well-served by this group and our current agency. Next slide, there we go. I, I don't have a slide for fire administration, because I can't think of any picture that would demonstrate that, other than one of me sitting at a desk. So, but our administrative staff consists of myself, two deputy chiefs, and three admin people that help us just run the department. And then the department's divided up into divisions. Services Division, which helps coordinate all of our facility and fleet maintenance with that department in the city. The Emergency Preparedness Division, which is under the fire department, and their mission is to help both the community and the city prepare for disasters. And they're the ones that would operate the EOC during a disaster-type response, whether it's a snowstorm or an earthquake. We then have the Training Division, and they're based out of Fire Station 51 in Kenmore. And they are responsible for overall training of all of our operational people in the organization, and also training new recruits that we get into the organization. We currently have eight recruits, and they're going through EMT training right now, and they'll be coming out of about a fourteen-week academy, January fifth, I believe, they graduate. So, and then our Prevention and Education Division, they are the ones that, when you want to build a building in Bothell, they're the ones making sure that the plans meet current fire code. And then they also, along with our engine companies and operations, they go out and do inspections to make sure that when you go into a restaurant, the exits aren't blocked, or the electrical hazards that could cause a fire aren't present. So those are the divisions that help keep our community safe. And the Operations Division is the largest division, and this is the personnel that staff all three of our fire stations. In August, the council approved funding to add two firefighters per day. So as of today, we are now bringing in fourteen staff every day to staff three engine companies, two aid units, and a battalion chief on duty out of our three stations. Last year, you know, obviously, we went on a lot more EMS responses than we do fire responses. You can see the numbers up there, including motor vehicle accidents, which we have a lot of those on 405, and even in town here. Response time average for 2022 was seven fifty, and you can see how many incidents we respond on a month and how that's escalating. Typically, at the end of the year, in the winter months, it tapers off a little bit, but we'll see it climb back up again probably in the spring, as people get out and about more. I want to really point out, though, that the chart on the right, where the chart takes a dive, is where Aid 145 went in service. And so I don't have, that is data from mid-August, August fourteenth, to the end of September. And just that short, six-week period, you can start seeing results that we're getting. I don't have data for October, November yet, but I'm hoping to see that trend continue. So my message to you is, your, your investment is paying off and improved service, service to the public. So as the city manager referred to, we were here in June and asked permission to go forward and do this study. We wanted to look at all the options available to us, a very holistic approach as compared to a more targeted approach council had seen before. And we wanted to look at the best way to provide service to our growing community, not only now, but in the future. So we're looking at that, from that angle. The options that are available to you, which we outlined in attachment two, are status quo. We don't do anything. We establish some type of Bothell Fire District within the city limits. We partner with another agency in some way, shape, or form. We create an RFA. We annex into an existing RFA, or we annex into an existing fire district. Is that all I think? And so we looked at all of those options, weighed the pros and cons, and I think we came up with some thoughts that are very interesting. We learned a lot in the process, so I'm looking forward to that.
So also from June sixth, count, staff proposed a set of guideposts that we would hold dear as we continue to move forward with this work, so that we were keeping our eye on the Right North Star. And just briefly, the first was, any recommended option would have to maintain or improve the service level that Bothell already receives. So that was something that we had consensus around. The next thing that was holding dear for us is we respect our employees. The, we are very proud of the dedicated staff of the fire department and those that support the fire department. So any recommended option would continue to support those employees, as well as provide maybe greater training, different professional development, something to continue. If, if a change is made, that that respect should, respect. If a change is made, that that respect of employees is important. We said we would continue to seek stakeholder output. This is an area we have not done as much in, as we had so many options to think about. But one of the things we did do is go back to the 2022 budget survey that happened before my time here. But there was a very specific question in that survey that talked about a timely response for fire and EMS. And in 2022, the responses were about 880-odd people that responded to that survey. And the answer was 95% of the respondents says it either met, exceeded, or greatly exceeded expectation on timely response of fire and EMS. So we do have data points that help us understand what maintain and improve service might look like. City manager standard mentioned early on that economically sensible does not mean cheapest option. Economically sensible means it's the right value for the dollar, not only the dollar for the city, but the dollar for the taxpayer, and thinking more broadly. So that was on our list. And the last was transparency. So at this point, we have established a web page on the fire department's website within the city. Chief Reisen has also done great work connecting out with all employees, as well as neighboring fire districts, et cetera. So we've done plenty of outreach to gain more information. What we have done since June is we analyzed the six options that Chief Reisen mentioned a few minutes ago, talking about advantages and disadvantages. We broke those into two buckets, things that would happen within the city of Bothell, and things that require a partner. We'll talk about those in a minute. We also took a peek at all 58 cities within Snohomish and King County, and how are services being delivered across all cities and towns. Chief Reisen will speak to that, as well as speak a little bit into the three entities that we went and met with. And the final piece that we spent quite a bit of time on is employee outreach. We met with all shifts, including all divisions and all, including the admin. And I'll take just a minute here and talk a little bit about what we heard. There was, I would say that as we had those meetings, they were wide-ranging in conversation. There were operational issues as well as fire service study. But regarding the fire service study, there was overall appreciation for leadership and the time spent to meet with everyone, including the transparency that was brought. There was overall curiosity about the work. And I think anytime you have something like this, there's curiosity. What is the process? What is the things? What are the options, et cetera? And I think with any large change management discussion, even a discussion of such a thing, it will bring up feelings of concern around job loss or job change. And the request back to us was, please pay attention and keep us informed, and continue to be transparent with us. So I think, at this moment, we met with all employees in the middle of the summertime, and then Chief Reisen just went and did another round with all the employees, mainly just to let them know that we're coming tonight and what this conversation would look like. I'm going to take, there's a lot of information in your packet regarding the six options. I'm going to take it pretty quickly and try to hit a little bit about what each one does, and the advantages and disadvantages, without going too far deep. So I'm not going to hit everything that's in your packet. I will warn you in advance. I would also suggest that what's in your packet regarding advantages and disadvantages is staffs look at kind of a high level of lists. Council may have other advantages or disadvantages you want us to look at, and we acknowledge it's not an exhaustive list, because I think it would be much longer if it was. So we acknowledge that upfront. So, starting with the two that Bothell can do on its own, the first is Bothell can remain Bothell Fire. And under this option, with the growth of the city, there will be investments needed over time in order to meet the growing demand of the city. The advantages is, it's really easy to implement. It's just a go forth and we're done. So super easy to implement. The disadvantages is, with a three-station fire service, the challenge of trying to reach those economies of scale or those efficiencies of scale are more difficult to do. We don't have as many assets to make strategic solutions around. We have probably, you know, a three-station standardized approach to certain things. So we may not be able to accomplish that efficiencies of scale that we've been looking to do. The second option is to create a Bothell-only fire district. That would be setting up a new taxing authority, which would just create a tremendous amount of work in that. But the good news is, is our service level would be maintained. It would be what we know. So that would be there. It would, again, have be challenged with a three-station entity to create those efficiencies of scale. And with a new taxing district, and you'll hear me say this again in a couple more options down the road, with a new taxing district, there is some work that would need to be done around understanding the impact to the taxpayer and the impact to how the city is funded. So there's a body of work that would still need to be done to consider one of those types of options. All work that can be done, but just would need to be done. Moving on to the right-hand column, those that require a partnership, we would need somebody else to join us to make those happen. Partner with another entity. Under this, a different fire entity would provide service to the city of Bothell. We would not need to see any tax structure changes here. There'd be various levels to explore, everything from starting from administrative structure to a partial to a full service. So there's plenty of options within this range. And depending on the provider, one of the advantages could be that we would see those efficiencies of scale. So that could be there. On the disadvantaged side, the cost of service would be determined by the provider. So that would be on the simplistic side. The next three options on the table are all nuanced and different. An RFA is slightly different than a fire district. I acknowledge that. But the complication of how they're all done, I'm going to wrap them all together to make it a little bit simpler. Under any of these options, depending on the size, all, first of all, create a new taxing district. That's a true, under RFA or under an annexing to a district. Those all create new taxing structures. Depending on the partner, again, we'd be able to see those efficiencies of scale. And on the disadvantaged side, we would need to do some work around impact to the taxpayer and to the city funding structure. So from a very high level, like, given the big picture, I think those are the big advantages and disadvantages as we move forward. Did you want to speak to the?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. One more thing to do. I forgot. We did a, as Tony mentioned, we did a look at all of the cities and towns in Snohomish and King County, just to get an idea of what everybody else is doing. We broke it down into three groups. There are eight cities that are standalone fire service providers. We are one. Bothell is one. Everett is one. Mukotio is one. Bellevue is one. Even though both Bothell and Bellevue have relationships with other cities and towns or fire districts to provide them fire protection, none of those involved a consolidation. It was just, we're going to protect you under an agreement. So there's eight cities that are that way right now, including the city of Seattle would be an example of that. Edmonds is an example of a partner with another entity where they had a fire department. I think it was a three-station fire department, similar to Harts. They have partnered with South County Fire, which is a regional fire authority. And all of their personnel were transferred to that department, and that department now provides service to Edmonds. That's one example of many. Another, 38 cities are in some kind of an RFA or fire district. Shoreline, I believe, is an example of that, where they've never had their own fire department. They were just annexed into the, what is now the Shoreline Fire District. Kent is an example where they had a city fire department, and they've now created an RFA, as did Renton. So we get, by looking at this, we can get an idea of kind of which way the industry is going. And I think it's safe to say there is a trend towards partnerships of some kind, whether it's formal or in just a partnership versus an annexation or something. The other thing we did, and I think this was a really valuable use of our time, is the cities of, or the agencies of Renton, the city of Lynnwood, and South County Fire, along with the fire chiefs of Olympia and Tumwater, were gracious enough to allow us to come and talk to them. The city of Lynnwood went from a two-station fire department to annexing in or forming an RFA with South County Fire. And we talked to all of these agencies about their process, what they went through, what went well, what didn't, and learned a lot from these people. And we're greatly appreciative of the time that they spent with us. Renton is now, Renton Fire Department used to be part of the city of Renton. It's now an RFA on its own, and it has partnerships with two fire districts that are either part of the RFA or just a partner, and they pay Renton RFA to provide service to them. And then Olympia and Tumwater, I had a real good conversation with those two chiefs. And I went down there because they attempted to form an RFA with support from both cities. And that effort failed, and for multiple reasons. But we had a really good conversation with them. But it really gave me a very good idea of how much work is involved in that effort. And it was, they were very frustrated that it failed, and all that work kind of went by the wayside. So that was a very valuable experience. What did we learn in all of our study? And I think we can go to the next slide. There we go. So our findings are that all options are possible. There's nothing, whether it's standalone, or forming an RFA, or some other solution that we've looked at, they're all possible. All options can and do provide outstanding service. Everybody we talked to was very happy with where they were landing. And nobody we talked to would have any desire to go back to, you know, whether it's the city of Lynnwood to a three-station fire or two-station fire department. All of them were very, very pleased with the outcome. The larger the agency, the more efficiencies you can gain. And those involve things surrounding incident management, solutions. The more resources you have under one roof, the better chance you have of having the resources you need to solve problems that need to be fixed within that organization. And then employee growth, more promotional opportunities, more training opportunities, more opportunities, say, to work as a paramedic, or on a ladder truck, or things like that, that a smaller agency just did not provide. We also learned that RFA's formation, fire district annexations, are long and complicated processes with both considerations, or considerations both to the city and the new entity. Tony mentioned the financial aspect of doing that, and its impact on the city tax structure. That's something that we have to look at in the long run. Partnering with other agencies allows for, I guess, baby steps prior to, without negating your future options. So if we partnered with an agency, that doesn't rule out forming an RFA at a later date. So it leaves our options open.
With that, we'd like to bring forward our staff recommendation or proposal to you of what we think next steps might look like. So we think it's a three-pronged effort. So the first would be that we would continue research on some near-term practical options, including remain as Bothell Fire, partner with another for administrative services, or partner with another for partial or full services. Thinking about those three options, they also do not negate, as Chief Reisen just mentioned, and would hold on for the future, to create a Bothell-only fire district, form an RFA, et cetera, on the middle list. So none of those options come off the list. The first column allows us to continue, and then think about those longer-term or complicated options. Finally, we would return to you in January with whatever feedback you might have for us today with this proposal, or any other direction that you would choose to give staff. We are open. We provide you with a straw person to allow you a place to start, based on the findings that we found. All right. With that, council, oops. Council, I believe we are here for your discussion and direction questions, anything else that we can offer to help with.
Thank you. So I really appreciate this presentation that you brought us. You know, even what's in the agenda packet is very detailed, and I think does a really good job of kind of laying out what the options are, and advantages and disadvantages. I have a few questions based on your presentation tonight, and then also some from the packet as well. When you were giving the service update, I'm wondering, did Bothell Fire see any changes in responses, the number of responses or trends, as the Regional Crisis Response Team came online? Do you know if you have the data for that?
No. We are having our first presentation with that group this week. And we've accessed them, I would say we have not accessed them yet, to gauge whether or not there would be an impact with that yet.
The other thing I'll just note for kind of where we are on future focus is just last week, at a executive board meeting for the Regional Crisis Response Agency, there was a request from the executive director to add Chief Reisen to the operations board as an advisor. And that passed, and I think a big part of that, too, is to bring in Bothell Fire's voice into the conversations, particularly related to, we have some future opportunities of where transport, in terms of an emergency call, looks different in terms of how Bothell Fire responds to, in particularly, the crisis clinic that will be opening in Kirkland. And so how does that work in terms of medical response requirements, and what are the protocols, and how do we do that? And I know that Chief Reisen, with his experience, and again, I mentioned that kind of regional respect is going to be an important voice in that conversation. I think we'll start seeing changes, but I do think it's, so far, even with other partner agencies that have been involved with that, it's a little early to have seen a change.
Well, I just love that there are answers like that. Basically, it's coming. And you guys are doing some really great work. I think having you on that committee is going to be really important. So I'm glad that you've opted to join, that you were welcomed there. And I know that in January, the principals' assembly will be meeting again. And so maybe if you do have that data before then, if you could pass it on to Racer, and then Racer could then present it to the assembly, that would be great. On the slide about the different cities and how it broke down, the 812 and 38, I would actually be really curious to get the list of cities that are those 12 cities that partner with other cities, that I think would help me geographically kind of organize what the options are. And then, one of the, on one of the slides, you mentioned that one thing that is appealing is a larger entity. And so I'm wondering, could you share some information about what are some of the largest entities in the area that I believe meet the criteria of being, you didn't use adjacent, you used a different word in the packet. It was proximity.
Reasonable proximity.
Yeah, reasonable proximity, yeah. So I'd love to know, you know, what are the largest entities in our regional proximity? And then I also just want to point out that number five was particularly interesting to me, partner with another RFA to annex into an existing RFA. And the disadvantage was there are no King County RFAs available to merge with. And like, but also, that option still is possible. It just means, I think, undoing, reworking, and recalibrating everything to go Snohomish County facing.
Yes.
And so I can tell, like, yes, it's possible.
It's possible.
Doesn't mean it's desirable. And I think I, like, just me personally, I could very easily say, like, let's not consider that one any further. And I don't know what my colleagues think about that, but just, first things first, that's where I'm at.
I will hold on to that. But I'm going to let Chief Reisen use his experience and talk about the, how efficiencies happen in larger organization, and what does that look like from maybe a number of stations' perspectives, sir, if you could do that.
Thank you.
Yes. The best example I can give you is going back to my previous employer, when I was a captain or a battalion chief responding to calls in the field. And the And if we responded to a fire, say, in the north end of Bellevue, we would respond with automatic aid companies, Redmond, Kirkland, all very good departments, outstanding people. And as hard as we tried and as hard as we trained together, we could never function as smoothly and as good as if I responded to a fire in the middle of Bellevue where I was working with all Bellevue engine and ladder companies. And that's, there's unintended differences that occur and everybody's trying their best, but as hard as they try, you're still trying to mimic that larger organization that has one chief, one set of SOPs, one pumper spec, one hose load, you know, for everything. Until you get that, you're just a bunch of different agencies trying to work together and you'll, you need to break through that glass ceiling and become literally one agency if you want to gain those efficiencies and from an emergency response perspective. So I think that brings more cost or more benefit per dollar to the community. If you're going to spend money on fire protection, you might as well move it towards a larger agency, I believe, to get that benefit. Other benefits are, you know, currently we're in a situation where, and this is reinforced every time I go out and talk to our crews and work with people in the various divisions of our department. We work very hard to go out and hire the very best people we can. We train them well and we do a great job with that. They give us great service. And then they want to become a paramedic. Well, that option's not available for us in this department. And so we have an agreement with our ALS provider that they become, they go, apply in their program, they get accepted. We're getting ready to send three people to paramedic training. I'm very happy for them. However, we lose that employee forever. In my previous employment, we would send our people to medic school because we were an ALS provider. They would then spend maybe 10 years as a medic, get some wonderful experience, some wonderful decision-making skills. They would then maybe decide, I want to come out and I want to take the test to be a lieutenant. And then they'd take the test to make a captain and the last two deputy chief of operations in my former city have all been former paramedics. And so we lose that when you don't, when we don't get those people back. There'll be Shoreline employees forever now. And so that's another example, but there's many that you miss the boat on if you stay a smaller agency, in my opinion.
I believe there was also a question about large agencies that are in reasonable proximity, as well as an answer to the question about partnerships, if you want to handle that, Deputy C. Manager.
I can handle the question on partnerships pretty easily. The 12 cities that are partnering, and I'll read them off to you, but then I will also send them in an email so you don't have to have them memorized if you don't choose to. Bozarts, Black Diamond, Clyde Hill, Edmonds, Hunts Point, Medina, Mercer Island, Newcastle, Sea-Tac, there may be some W's, ready? Woodinville, Woodway, and Yarrow Point.
Make sure you're paying attention.
I only saw the two W's and I didn't see any further. Yeah. And tell me a little bit more about your question about the adjacent entities. So looking for what our larger options are near us, is that the question or is it something different than that?
It's basically who are the large entities in reasonable proximity.
Chief, what do you got?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Around us, you know, Woodinville is, has become a partner with Eastside Fire. They're becoming a larger entity every day. We have a standalone department, Kirkland, to our south, obviously. And then Shoreline, who is our ALS provider, is consolidated with the old North Shore Fire Department and they have a partnership for service. So that is our surrounding agencies. That would be who I would be looking at.
So surrounding and in reasonable proximity, are there others that are in reasonable proximity that are not surrounding?
I think I'd have to look at the map and think about that. I'll put that on our bring back in January. Question, if that's okay with you, Councilman Brollicks?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are my questions.
Just real quick, a map would be great of the cities around us and who they're using, what their models are. Looking at the list of cities is great, but just seeing what's nearby, especially, I know we don't, we have a lot of, in King County, we share a lot of borders with cities. I think for Snohomish County, we go into unincorporated and then there's a city, sort of there's a no man's land between, so just a map would be really helpful.
We have a map. I have it on my wall in my office, so I'll make sure I get it in the next packet for you.
I'm not surprised at all. Thank you.
I've got a few questions. Can you talk more about the Shoreline-North Shore partnership relationship? I noticed in the packet it was written one way, but I wasn't quite sure how they're partnering now. Is it, has North Shore contracted out administration to Shoreline and so their firefighters became Shoreline firefighters and they're running that station?
I have to do more detailed research into, I haven't looked into their contracts of how Shoreline is contracting with their agencies. I do know that I'm pretty sure Shoreline is providing contractual service for North Shore for all of it. I think it's beyond an administrative structure, but again, it's not a contract that the city owns, so I'd have to do some research into it.
Okay. When I was looking at the list, I'm a pattern person, so I was looking for a pattern to see, clearly there's one way that is the best way or the preferred way, and I did not see that at all. It was just all over the place, city size, region geography, and then structure. I didn't see any pattern whatsoever in that and that I found very interesting, just as an aside. If we were to partner, I guess, with administration, with an agency in Snohomish County, would we lose ALS and Medic One from Shoreline?
Boy, that is a very complicated issue and I don't know, we would have to figure out a solution because we, our ALS is funded through the King County ALS levy and so trying to mix that money with a Snohomish County service provider is, I don't think we could do it, to be honest. And so we would have to figure out how that would work and I think it would be too complicated.
Okay. That's my biggest worry. I don't know if it would be the same with a King County agency if we went with Eastside Fire and Rescue or, obviously with Shoreline, we maintain Medic One, but would we lose it with, going with Kirkland or going with Eastside?
I think if we stayed with the King County agency, we would retain it and I think we would retain it for the most part if we went with a Snohomish County agency.
Okay. That's my biggest, one of my biggest concerns would be losing that. It's very special to have and I think it provides a great service, advanced level of service and being number one in the nation with ALS support. I would not want to lose that under any circumstances. Looking at Kirkland, I thought they had more fire stations than they actually do. They're about double our size in population. They've got double the number of stations, thinking out 20, 30 years, expecting growth in this city. Do we know what that will look like in terms of equipment, personnel, station requirements? I know we're in the south part of the city, we're already seeing a lot of response from Kirkland to help us, but I'm curious, you know, what would that look like in terms of investment as we grow?
So I can start and then I'm going to push it over to Chief Ryson, who can actually speak to this from an operational standpoint. The growth of the city will be based on a couple of things, where calls come from and how long times does it take to get the red truck, I'm assuming they have red trucks, to the incident. The flip side of that, which Mark will also talk to, is automatic aid and how our neighboring cities and how automatic aid works, no matter where that fire truck is, the closest one goes to the incident. So as we think about the growth of the city, we've not done a 20-year look to say, we think it's going to grow by X number, therefore we're going to have to put stations in here and here and here. I would challenge that what we put in the packet is near-term investments. We'd be looking to staff a ladder truck pretty quickly, as well as addressing some of the administrative things like payroll and data that we're probably lacking here at the city. And with that, Chief, I'm going to turn it over to you to talk a little bit more about how you think about new stations, where they'd come from, and maybe a little bit noise on automatic aid since we do have, we are surrounded by many places.
Just to define automatic aid, and King County has done just a phenomenal job collaborating with all the fire chiefs and what, all fire agencies are dispatched through NORCOM. All fire apparatus has a computer in it that shows NORCOM what its status is, where it's at, and what its capabilities are. And so the way that works is NORCOM gets a call for, say, CPR in progress and we have response plans that dictate that that's going to get an engine company, a medic unit, an aid unit, and a battalion chief to respond to that because it's a very manpower-intensive caller, staffing-intensive. So the computer in seconds picks out the closest one of those. So it could be an engine from Kirkland coming back from a class at the training center here in Kenmore and it's available, so the computer will grab it, even though it's not in Kirkland, and send it down the street here to that call. And that's all about maintaining response times. And so as we move forward and look at what the city's going to look like, that's our business is response time. And I think we're all ready. We didn't do a deep dive into this, but I think the south end of the city, there's a bit of a gap there that will need to be addressed at some point. As Tony said, I think at some point, we just had, and this is the complexity of our city as it grows, we just had a fire and a trash chute the other night in one of these six-story buildings and it spread smoke throughout the building. And now we have units tied up for ages, hours, literally, because we've got to get people sheltered in place or get them evacuated, plus fight the fire. And these big buildings are just large, complicated structures and they take more resources to handle incidents like that. And so as more and more of those buildings come along, I think survey and rating bureau will eventually come here and say, you need to staff a ladder company or your fire insurance rates could go up because we'll drop your rating. So those are the types of things I look at. We mentioned the administrative needs that are going to come if we stay this small and I think that's where you would gain some efficiencies is, in some type of larger organization is getting that capacity with that type of move. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I think it's a complex question because we really don't know at this time. It's hard to figure that out. Like you said, a rating agency could come in and say, you need to do this because you have this number of, you know, large buildings that could use a ladder and so. I know that the data has showed in the previous studies, I think the last study I looked at was 10 years old, that looked at the heat maps. There were certain areas where we could put a station or could use a station based on response time, but that'll, of course, change over the next 10 to 20 years as we continue to grow as a city. So I think that helps. One option that I didn't see listed, and I don't know why I didn't think of this last time or during the Public Safety Committee, but I didn't see it in the list, was what if we become the administrative agency for other agencies? Is that an option? If we were to say, you know, North Shore did not want to partner with Shoreline anymore, they'd rather partner with us and Snohomish County Fire District Seven and maybe a few others wanted to partner with Bothell to save their taxpayer some money and we can save some money as well, is that an additional option?
I would view it as an extension of remain as Bothell Fire.
Okay.
So, you know, as you remain as Bothell Fire, we currently contract with Fire District 10.
With 10.
Thank you, Fire District 10. And obviously, if we remained as Bothell Fire, that could be a direction that we continue to pursue, to think about other places that would want to contract with us. So I think those options exist. I would call it an extension of Bothell Fire, but we can certainly be more clear about it in the packet, there's no doubt.
Okay. I think that makes sense. The last question I had was just around the failures, you know, the Tumwater-Olympia failure. I think it was cited that one failed because of a vote of residents, is that right?
Yes, that was a proposed RFA that must go before the voters. They were asking the voters to put in a benefit service charge along with that, which you got to get 60% of the vote with that. And for whatever reason, there was strong public opposition to it that was very well organized and it ended up not being successful.
Okay. In looking at that, I was just thinking, is there a way, given that we're in a big election year when likely a lot of people are going to be voting, is there a way to do an advisory question on the ballot to ask the question, are our residents even interested in the district? Because if we go down that road and we don't have interested residents and we get to the point where, I believe that one has to be voted on too, we could do all this work for nothing if our residents don't want it. So could we, could we put a question out there? It's probably really hard to phrase it and ask that question without a lot of context, but I just am wondering, is there an opportunity to do that this year, given that there's going to be likely, I would guess, record-setting voting, given the current political climate? We have captured audience, people's attention, we can get some feedback.
I have a couple of thoughts, but I probably want to go back and do a little bit more thinking about it, so I'm going to suggest that as an option. If the question is around what would the public like, I think there's a variety of ways in which we could accomplish without doing an advisory vote or with doing an advisory vote. I think we can do some thinking around that. But I think it has more to do with how we address public engagement and what people need and value out of their fire department. I think being able to explain the taxing authority piece without a lot of context would be challenging. It doesn't mean it's not doable. I just need to put some thinking around how that might work and whether or not a public engagement bent might help us get to that same outcome if it serves the council.
Okay.
Is that acceptable to you?
Yeah, that's great. I just wanted to throw it out there as an idea, recognizing that it is difficult to convey what that might look like or help people come along, understand what that could mean in the future. If we've got other ways to do outreach and get that feedback, it's probably better to do it another way and not cause more confusion if we're not actually going to do it, but just wanted to throw it out there as an idea.
That's good feedback.
Great, thanks. I think that's all my questions.
I think you've answered some of my questions, so if I ask a question that you've covered, please forgive me. On Slide 6, looking at number of incidences and incidents and response time, I'm guessing that we could infer that the higher number of incidents, it's, there's a correlation with that and response time? Because I watch, looking at the graphs, it looked like they almost.
I think, yes, there is a slight correlation and it simply boils down to you're going to have better response times the less busy your units are.
True.
Because they're not going to be tied up on other incidents.
So this leads me to my next question and maybe it's an outside entity, you know, putting pressure on us. But is there a recommended threshold on response time that will trigger the need to expand the number of crews and the vehicles? I mean, in the industry, is there a, you hit this minute mark and you need to look at fixing this?
I would have to do some research, but, you know, I think we I would have to do some research, but, you know, I think we know that, I saw something the other day, I was reading, that for every 30-second delay, or don't quote me on this, in starting CPR, the odds of survival go down. And so there's metrics out there like that, but I'm not prepared to lay them out tonight.
Okay.
We'd be more than happy to bring those back, though.
Okay, okay. I was just curious if there was a little industry standard that said, you need to up your game when you hit this threshold.
Yeah, there are.
Okay, okay. And then another question, you don't have to tell me who, I'm just curious if, if there's other service providers who have said that they'd be willing to talk at taking on administration?
We haven't asked. We've focused more importantly on the work in front of us and the options for you to consider versus the who or the how. I think that would be information that we would consider bringing back in the future, whether or not we wanted to do an RFP or some other process. So I think for staff, for us, I think that would be premature. Would you agree, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, so no one brought it up, like, so, hey, while we're talking about this, got it?
I have intentionally not talked about it with people because of this process.
Okay, all right, good. I just, I wanted to say that staff recommendations, near-term, and with the options, made a lot of sense with me, so I don't have any reservations on going with what staff has recommended I was looking at Option 2. Would it be possible to do Option 2 and farm out our administration?
As such as, a little bit more information on farm out.
Well, we would become, we would, where the fire would separate and become its own entity.
Yes.
But it, we would partner with adminning with another group, is that possible?
That is possible, the option, that is one of the options that we would bring back, coming back to you.
Where you could couple them.
We would come back with a variety of options to think about that.
Oh, okay. All kinds of permutations and combinations.
They could be infinite, but we'll try to frame it in the way that works.
I think that's all the questions that I want to hammer you with. I just want to say, as an aside, Councilmember McNeil talked about the quality of service. And I have to say personally, this fall, we had experienced it, and the paramedics were very, very professional, and they didn't arm-twist my mother to go into the hospital to do follow-up. But they encouraged her in a way that she went, and it was very prudent. So their skill and the way they presented to a woman who was a little disoriented with what was going on was very much appreciated.
Thank you for the information. It's a lot to absorb. Before I jump into my thoughts, I did have a question on Option 2, so creating a Bothell-only fire district. That would, would that require that there was a separate board that operates that fire district, so that would not be the city council at that point? It wouldn't be like when we're like, no, we're the EMS district, it would be like a full, separate board?
It would be more like your urban EMS district.
Okay, so it would.
You would make the choice. If it's a Bothell-only fire district, this body would make a choice as to how that governing would work. You all could choose to, as you did with the urban district, one minute you're city council, duck the gavel, and then you've done the other one, right? So that option exists, or you could say you would like to have a separate board. That would be a choice.
Okay, that's interesting. I think one of the things that I think about as we look at the future is the fact that we are in two counties. I think Councilmember Manke and I have bonded over being the Snohomish County residents right now on the council, Snohomies, as the mayor likes to call us. And it was alarming to me to look at the notes on Option 5, that there are no King County RFAs available, and then if we went with the Snohomish County RFA, we perhaps wouldn't be able to utilize NORCOM or Shoreline for ALS. Like, there's a lot there, and I hesitate to, A, change things up so much all at the same time, that we then were just in a whole new world, right? But also, I mean, these are, as Councilmembers Orons talked about, these are life-saving moments. My father had a stroke a couple of years ago and had to be talked into the fact that he was having one. So it was, you know, you want continuity and the best possible care. And so I think, for me, especially as we look at a lot of growth, we've talked about, I know Director Greenspan has cited 75,000 as a possible number in the next two decades. And I really am, at this point, comfortable with Option 1 or 2, and maybe looping in 3A. But if we do look at administrative services, I would want us to compete as well. So the city should be able to cite, here's what it would cost us to provide it, so do we need to have someone outside this building performing those tasks or not, right? Because I do think that there's a lot of cohesion and still having that within our city. The other thing is, before us, in the past, we have had things like joining in purchasing agreements for police and fire vehicles, where it's like, okay, Linwood got a good price on fire engines, we're going to join that agreement and buy one under that. So I'd really want to make sure that the seven of us get a grasp on where can we team without not being the Bothell Fire Department? Where can we team on purchasing and other efficiencies that we can just gain through those interlocal agreements? Because I think that's been really great, and I imagine a lot of cities also would like to save money on stuff, so the better we can negotiate some things together. I just, I think that that seems really promising, but I would like you guys to find out for sure, and not just have me guess that. I don't buy a lot of fire engines personally, unless we're talking about the kind your toddler drives. So the other thing, I, yeah, I want to, I want to find the best option. I don't want to, I appreciate that we're not looking at what's the cheapest option, it's what is the best use of our money. And just, I think a lot of times when we talk about decisions, we forget about the far-south folks, you know, right next to Kirkland, or the far-north folks, right next to unincorporated Snohomish County. And a regional authority from one county or the other is not going to span that line like we do, and that gives me a lot of pause personally, so, thank you.
Councilmember Dodd, can I repeat back the options that were of interest to you, just to make sure I got them correct?
Sure.
I got 1, 2, and 3A.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Bothell is competing.
Bothell is, yeah, I heard that as well, yeah, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, but before I start, I just want to say I really appreciate the breadth of this, without getting bogged down in details, which is a really tough line to walk. And I also appreciate that it doesn't seem like we have presupposed the answer before we have asked the question. And both of those things are things I very, very much appreciate. So like, I just want to call that out and say, thank you. A couple of questions. Option 2, I don't really understand, like, what it changes, other than we make decisions, and I have to call people, board members, instead of council members.
So Option 2 would be to create a Bothell, the city of Bothell, like a peanut.
Yeah, yeah.
I've seen a Bothell.
I got you, yeah.
Fire district.
Yeah.
That would, in essence, you're correct, from a service-level perspective, there's really no change. It would be more about the fact that you've created a taxing authority that would allow a different method of how to pay for fire service. I think that would be the litmus test on just a Bothell-only fire district.
So the different method of taxing is just a different entity taking the same money?
Yes.
Okay. So functionally, like, there's not a lot of difference, it's just if somebody goes on the county's website and looks at, like, the pie of, like, where your property taxes go to, that would be a little different.
Correct.
That doesn't seem to be much of an improvement to me. I will just, my feedback. I, another thing about the King County-facing thing in NORCOM is racer, is all King County cities, and I'm hopeful that one day NORCOM will hire and train specifically for that, and I want to make sure we retain that benefit. We also, like, just went to one dispatching agency, so people don't have to get kicked back and forth between two dispatching agencies, and I don't want to go back. Like, I like having one dispatching agency for the entire city. And this might be out of the scope, because we aren't talking about different things, but one thing, when you come back and look at different agencies that we can go with, it's my understanding that there are different structures in the, in governing structures for the different agencies that we could look at, and I would want to know about the pros and cons of those. One of the things that I like about staying Bothell Fire is that we have control, and we can decide what we want to do on our own in the future. And so anything that we do that would retain some level of that would be more attractive to me. The other thing that I'm curious, so I'm, I guess, I'm in agreement with you guys, and I appreciate, like, we need to look at staying the same or contracting. None of the other options seem super attractive and/or feasible right now, and they seem like a ton of work for, I'm not exactly sure. I would also want to answer the question, how do we make sure our community gets the benefits of the levy they're already paying, and how do we not open them up to a future levy from a different organization that would want to put something like that on the ballot? Because we have just very recently passed levies and bonds for fire, and I want to make sure that our community is protected from that. And so if there was a way we could get a governing structure, how could we protect ourselves from future levies to pay for stuff that we've already paid for, so we don't end up having to pay for ours and somebody else's?
That's a really good point, thank you. That's, thank you.
And I think that's what I've got. So I guess my instruction and what I would love to see coming back is more specifics about what the partnering opportunities look like, what those different, I mean, obviously, we're probably not near at the point where we can compare costs, but more in the governing structure and the, like, what are our different options in terms of who we would partner with?
As well as your main Bothell Fire, did I hear that as well?
Yeah, I mean, that's the, I guess, the question that we're asking is, is something, is something attractive enough to make us change?
I'm good. Got a follow-up question to one of the mayor's questions. The part where, if we were to create a Bothell-only fire district, and we're taking essentially a pie, taking a slice from the pie and putting it over here under a different structure, if it's the same, I guess, taxing amount, like, we take our ability to tax in this one spot and we move it over here, what's the benefit of doing that change?
So, complicated question. I'll try to make it simple in the answer, and we can do a better write-up in a packet for you next time. But the reality is, is if you have a fire district, it would have two choices of funding options. It could have a property tax, and it could have a benefit charge. A benefit charge is a charge based on a property, based on their usage. So a restaurant with a gastove is going to pay a higher benefit charge than a residential home, because there is more option for fire, in simplistic terms. The, when we think about property tax, the property tax limit for the city would reduce by whatever the number is for the fire district, that's a given. Whether each uses that or not would still be a choice. So there still could be a financial impact that I think we'd have to do some work around. But you're correct, we'd be moving the money from one spot to the other. In essence, the exact dollar amount, I think we'd have to put some energy into.
Okay, that's helpful.
Just to put some additional, like, flavor on that, too, is actually, I'm remembering one of my first check-ins with Councilmembers Orons, and you had, we were talking about this item, knowing that there was some interest in bringing forward a discussion, I think in February of 2022, the council had discussed something. And I know you had a concern about that, any option that would make it be so that the city would retain its current taxing authority, and then just create a new entity that would then add a new tax, saying that wasn't us, and that we would be looking at as a revenue generator of pushing away. And I know at that time, I'm sure, I'm guessing at this time as well, you were concerned if that was going to come forward. You were not looking for something that was going to essentially tax people twice for services that they used, that they'll only receive once. And so I think that's embedded in some of these options, too, is that when the deputy city manager talks about, that there's additional financial analysis, is that we, again, that is a choice that the council can consider, and we also want to make sure that we're laying out, like, what are the implications of how that was approached? Because conversely, you can also pursue Option 2, and also say that we are going to take out any money that we collect, that we are currently allocating to the fire service, we're going to actually reduce our property taxes, we're going to reduce our tax base, and then we would have a different, a different set of numbers that we would look at with our budget. So I think that one, that question really does get to, and some of the fiscal analysis that needs to come back, is whatever options council would be looking for, we'd want to provide more insight into that range.
Thank you, that's helpful. I think, based on those things, I'm also supportive of learning more about 1, 2, and 3A, with also considering us as being the administrative agency for potentially others.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for letting me jump in again. And that was, that was one of my questions, Ben, so I appreciate it. My read of the difference between 1 and 2 was that for 2, I'm going to make up a town, because I don't want to pick on anyone, but let's say, let's say the little chunk of unincorporated Snohomish County between us and Mill Creek incorporates, and they're called Tiny Town. And Tiny Town decides that they need fire service, because they don't want to make their own station, and we could sell them our fire service for Option 2. That's kind of the difference to me. Am I reading that right?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Tiny Town, by the way, trademark now, so they're going to have to pay me if they want to call their city that. And then the other question I had was, I would want to know, when it comes to the safe-and-secure levy, which is still active, what not, anything other than Option 1 looks like when it comes to, like, collecting that levy money? Like, that seems like a bit of a mess, but maybe it's not as messy as I think?
I think since the voters did it for the city of Bothell, that levy would continue, unless this council chose to end the levy. That's always a choice this council can make, just because that is a choice. So the levy dollars would continue to come here. I think it would be about what we're paying, what we're using that money to pay for, whether or not it's one of these other options, and if that's flow-through money from us to someplace else, whether it stays here.
So we could kick the money for fire, too, this fire, to whatever our future?
We could, yes, so I think, but the voters voted for the city of Bothell to collect those dollars, and that's how that would be, unless this council chose to rescind it or sunset that levy.
Okay.
Before its time, which is a choice of the council.
I'm sure that's a legal choice, but that.
It is a legal choice.
Yeah. Cool, thank you.
Thank you, this is informative, this is a good discussion. I have to admit, I'm not very familiar with the intricacies of this whole industry, so it's very eye-opening for me, and it's very interesting. There's a question that I had, is the, you know, you had your guideposts slide, but there was no matrix where you had Option 1 through 6, and then how does that match which one you check, which one you X, which one you circle, you know, to make sure that covers which one is the best option based on those guideposts?
Deputy Mayor, I tried to make such a matrix, and I wasn't very successful at it. So, but I think after this conversation, I think I can see a path, that there's a pace that I think I could make something make more sense. I think from trying to develop before this conversation, I felt I was putting more on the table than I had heard back from you. So that's where the advantages and disadvantages chart came from, because I thought it was a little.
That was very useful.
Easier to understand from a policy perspective. I think we can do something there. Let's see what we can do by January.
I was thinking you had your guideposts, and then you have your options, and then...
Yeah, check marks.
Check, X, circle, you know, and you have different meanings.
We can do that. We can actually give it a shot, thank you.
Eyeballing the, just to, from a high level, here's how our criteria, these things, the even higher-level question that I have, which is based on the discussion you were having with the chief, is the, as the region grows, not just the city of Bothell, everybody's growing, and we're all going through comp planning, and we're all expecting to grow so much in the next 20 years, are there conversations at even higher levels? Perhaps have, because as we saw the trend, you know, you were saying the trends, and we're seeing 8, 12, 38, or whatever the number was, of individuals, and then partnerships, and then RFA, and districts, special districts, or fire districts? So are there conversations having, because the service level is very important. You're giving examples of something happens here, and this isn't happening, and then, you know, some crew is just leaving here. But then that coordination might be, like, for Woodinville, we'll probably need this, Kirkland will probably need this, Kenmore, like, having a much larger, like, North Shore-type thing, you know, for example, conversation, instead of having us just talk to Shoreline, or talk to Eastside, or talk to Kirkland, for example, is having, which will make things even more efficient.
Yeah. It's hard to predict. You know, I've heard rumors of some discussions that I, it's just rumor of, of agencies looking at merging, but nothing formal yet. You know, I go back to the days when I was on the King County Chiefs or Zone One Chiefs where there was 13 agencies and 13 fire chiefs. And now that number's shrunk probably down to six in the zone, I think. And so I think it's the trend, you know? If we, if we look at our information we put together, what the future holds, I can't predict.
As more housing exists and then more retail, you know, more things that will catch on fire, hopefully, God forbid, you know, but then there will be need to even coordinate even at a deeper level, right?
Yes. I would, I would agree with that.
Fires or other, other emergencies, emergency, yeah, thank you. So there will be no need to coordinate. And then if you, if we look at ourselves as Bothell only, what's the best thing for Bothell? But then you're going to have somebody in Woodenville is going to say, hey, help, I need you.
Yeah.
But you don't have an agreement. So how do you do that?
Somewhat related to that is the whole automatic aid picture. And we are, we get a lot more automatic aid than we give. And so how that factors into this discussion, I'm not sure, but that's something we need to be aware of and be conscious of as we look at questions like this that are future-focused.
Yeah. Because as I was looking through, remember the guideposts and then having the conversation around incidents and response times and which crew is where and who and which emergency is where? I mean, it gets complicated very fast. I mean, I'm already seeing a web of decisions that have to happen. And the more, because you were talking about how in your old, old job, how you want, North Bellevue needed something, but then you need, you got a crew from Kirkland, but they have different processes.
Yes.
Right? So that caused a few second delay, but we, there might be a few second delays, a matter of life and death, you know?
Yes.
So if, that's why I think it's like, is there even a higher level conversation that occurs to, to make it better for everybody in the region as a whole, including Bothell, you know?
Agreed.
Question mark, just a, a little question. Oh, even another problem, a question I have is we're going through this exercise, what is efficiencies the problem we're really trying to solve or is there, like, because I have the question, what problem are we trying to solve with this exercise?
I'll take a stab at that and I'll let Chief Friesen or City Manager Standard also jump in. So I think the problem we're trying to solve is not a today problem. So I think we have a past problem and a future problem that is worth our time to figure out. So the past problem is, is that we've been talking about doing something with fire service and that creates angst within just operations over time. And so finding a path to putting that conversation, if I can say to bed, or having a solid answer that takes us down for a while is an important piece of, of something that we're doing. The other piece of this is more future focused where we have, we've talked about it, we have growth happening in the city and we're a three-station fire service, which is just fine. The question is, is it going to be the right thing for the future? So if we're really thinking about our obligation of doing good leadership and public service, do we have the right thing that we want to, are we set up right for the future? I think that's where I would start. Chief, do you want to add to that or Mr. Standard?
You know, we've talked a lot about operational efficiencies and I won't beat that horse any longer. But I think administrative efficiency, you know, we're right now, we have a chief and two deputy chiefs overseeing roughly 65 people. And I've had that same structure overseeing close to 200. So, you know, how many people, the person to administrative level is something you got to look at, how many people are in that process? And we've talked about a more standardized approach to incident management, greater organizational depth for problem solving, having more people on hand that know more stuff and can help resolve issues. The other one I would really worry about, if you were going to stay Bothell, was retention and recruitment. Because you're just not going to, for the new person that's looking around at what fire department they want to look at, you're not going to have the opportunities they may want. The other one is someday you're going to replace me and
Never.
And what, you know, it's, the smaller you are, I think it impacts your candidate pool. And so that's something to think about in the process.
Thank you. Is there a waiting for each one of those things? Like what is the most important thing we need to address immediate, medium, and then long-term? You know, like there are multiple, multiple problems we're trying to solve at the same time. What is the relative importance and what's the priority? Because that would determine, do we remain as Bothell Fire, you know, your option one? Or do you go partner with somebody and, and outsource services, for example, which will might create the pathways for careers and stuff? I don't know.
I think they build on each other. I'm not sure you're going to find an exact specific answer. I think they build on each other. I think the reality is being able to think about the future focus of what happens over time is the biggest thing. I'm not sure, I would say it's a problem because I, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that, but it certainly is the obligation we have as leaders is to say, is it the right, is this the right service for the future? Did you want to add something to that, sir?
Yeah. The one thing I'd add, because I think it's a, it is always the right question to ask is what is the problem we're trying to solve? And one of the things that I spoke to this team about early in the process was making sure that we don't convey that, that there's a status quo option. Because I do think that in the future focus mindset and we need to figure out what our strategy or what our, what are we pursuing as we respond to the future growth of the community? Because even if we say Bothell Fire, I think then that, that information informs the paths that we take as we start looking at things like where are the response times that need to increase? What are the next apparatus we need to put on? What are the things? How do we get ahead of, we don't want the rating bureau to tell us what to do. We want to solve it before it's an issue. And, and so I think that, you know, at the end of the day, what this helps inform is we've had a, we've had a question, as the deputy city manager mentioned, of what does the future look like? And we had an opportunity with the transition and leadership of, it's always better to ask this question of what path do we want to take before you go to a national recruitment and ask somebody to move here? So there was a good, there was a good opportunity there, but ultimately, at the end of the day, I think one of the things that this council has the opportunity to do is to set the course for, we know that there's going to be investments, we know that there's going to be a need for a different level of service in the community as we grow. And which, which vehicle are we going to, are we going to take as we make those analysis? So I think that's a big part of it too.
The level of services, one, obviously you have to look at it from, you have the, the service you're providing, so you need to improve that for your customers, which is the, who are the residents. Does that at all, does that conflict with the other, it may or may not, is, does it conflict with, the question one, does it conflict with the other internal issues that you suggested, Chief, which is, you know, careers and recruitment and all that stuff? Do those two conflict with each other? And if not, which option then will help us accomplish both?
Which conflicts with?
Oh, so level of service versus, level of service and to the, the people aspect of things, the internal, the, the fire department people, the operational.
Yeah.
Tell me your enhancement, yes.
I think level of service, you know, everybody wants to work in an organization that provides good service, right? So we, the staff is very married to that and they want to. I think if you stay Bothell Fire, you're not going to get the benefits of the regional larger organization. And I think recruitment will be impacted by that, which could impact level.
And so then the question is, which is more important, the medium, long, short, medium, and long-term?
I'm, I'm going to just jump in. I think the most important thing, and I would frame this from the mission statement of the fire department, is to show up at people's places in crisis. So I would tell you that the faster the red truck gets to whichever, whichever red truck is needed or a collection of red trucks, I mean, there's, there's a variety getting, I've seen them all. There's a variety to choose from. I don't know which one you send for which, but I can tell you that when someone's in crisis and they are dialing 911, they're not calling to ask about the weather. They're calling to say, I am in crisis and I need somebody here now to help me deal with whatever is happening at this moment in this time. And the men and women that I have met in the Bothell Fire Department hold that dear and they believe strongly that they show up and they always show up. And they're the first ones that run into the fire. They're the first ones that are calming the people down that are having crisis in their homes. And they do that work well. I would challenge that the primary job is to show up and save lives every time.
Oh, without, without a doubt, I appreciate that. Look how proud the chief is from.
I feel like that was one of those like into the movie speeches.
I know, I know.
I think it's really important. It's really important.
So the, this is good. That means that the, 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 you know, the employee career also affects that, right? So because it's, you have morale and all that stuff, you know, you have to take that. Even the, every, even as much, as mission-driven as you are, you still care about growth and, you know?
Yes.
These things. So then which option from the six options is the one that gets us down that path?
I think that's partly work we need to bring back in January. But I think our staff recommendation, actually what I'm hearing around the table, if I could jump into that a little bit, and if I've got it wrong, somebody's going to tell me. What I'm hearing around the table is more work should be done on one, option one, which is remain as Bothell File, option two, which is fire district, option, levels of option three on partnering. Because those will help us make a decision. They also hold those longer ones, options for open. I think we need to do a little bit more work.
I'm going to be the contrarian and say options one and option two based on discussion are gone.
Are gone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Options one, option two, in my mind, based on what we just asked, are not part of the conversation. Because if career is an option and high level of service, increasing level of service as we grow is the goal and you will need to provide the people the opportunities to grow and provide that service, then one and two is status quo. That means status quo isn't working, right?
So may I push back just slightly, sir?
No.
I won't then, sir.
Yes, I'm kidding.
Because you are the council member, sir.
I'm kidding. Oh, no, no, you're the boss, so.
I would challenge that we don't have, as Mr. Standard said earlier, we don't have a status quo option on the table. Even option one requires investment in people and, and it, it will require us to invest, council to make choices about what investment likes. I don't think we have a quote-unquote status quo on the table, sir. Is that too bold, sir?
Please stop calling me sir. You can call him sir. I'm not sir. We know who's the boss. Yeah, yeah. So yes, I, that makes, that makes sense. It's as close as status quo as it gets to though. So do you want to do something bold and planned for, in 20 years, what do we want Bothell Fire to be, you know? So that's the, that's the thing and this is the, that's the answer we need to get to, right? And it's probably not going to be, it sounds like it's not going to be Bothell Fire anymore. Maybe it would be, I don't know, but you know? That's the, from this discussion, it sounds like that we're not going to be option one or option two, in my opinion.
Can I, can I jump in? I'll, I'll tell you, I'll tell you a thought, based on what you're talking about here, staying, you know, status quo still means that we have to grow. Something that has gone through my mind, a thought that just kind of is in the back of my head is talking about these changes feels like we're buying time on the need for building new stations for Bothell. And that if we were to go partner with other groups, long-term, short, long-term, we will be able to stretch by partnering with other groups. There's, you know, that level of service gets shared with a bigger geographical boundary. But in the back of my mind, at some point, growth is going to hit where the people who live here are going to have to figure out where the new stations are going to go in. And then the question is, do we want to do that under a Bothell umbrella or do we want to do that under a bigger umbrella? But, but I feel like stations are going to be a given down the road 20 years from now. And who's going to be driving that and putting new stations in? I may be wrong, but, but it seems like if everybody's growing, we're going to be needing new stations.
Go ahead.
I just, in talking about level of service, one thing that's interesting to me is when we look at the different regional fire authorities, I would want to see the level of service in the city that contracts with that fire authority, not the overall level of service to understand what do our neighbors get out of these partnerships? I think that just looking at one entity that serves many cities, looking at the overall level is not necessarily what we are going to be concerned with as one city that might join one. Especially some of these seem geographically spread out, given the amount of traffic that one might face driving between these two, you know, areas.
So earlier, when I made my comments, I was really just, I was still in like fact-finding mode, right? Gathering information. And, and so I'm really glad that everybody has been able to answer or ask their questions and get answers. And, and so now I feel like I'm ready beyond my opinion on option five to share what kind of my priorities are. I don't, I may be coming at it from different reasons, but I do agree with the deputy mayor that option one and two don't seem to be solving for the problems that we are trying to solve for. If the goal is to create efficiencies, to improve administration, to create improved training options, to modernize our, our, you know, facilities and equipment and all of, and all those things that we could get from regionalizing or modernizing, then the three options that relate to those goals are three, four, and six. I am, my kind of, where I lean towards is between four and six. Because those get you the efficiencies that, that we're trying to solve for. It allows us to attach to larger entities. And I think that that, and I don't know this, and this is why I want to ask, would participating in an RFA or a fire district give taxpayers more transparency in the, the ways monies are collected and used than if we were to partner? Do they have, would we have more like negotiating power in an RFA or a fire district over a partnership? Those are some of like the fiscal things that I'm, I'm considering when I look at those three options and why I would lean towards four and six.
We, I can certainly answer those. Outside of option two, four and six would both be governed by boards that would not be this council because it'd be with partnering entities. So how those boards are set up would actually be some of the work that would be done by this council and the partnering entities to think about how that would happen. There are options out there, we certainly, I certainly have information on that and can delineate it for you.
Related to that, which is a question you don't have to answer right now, you can later, is the impact on our finances?
Agreed. We have not done that work yet. Yep.
But what I am hearing from everybody is that no one's really interested in five.
How about if, as a option mayor and council, I'm hearing support in various levels for one, two, three A, three B, four and six? That's what I'm
I mean, my, I think one of the issues, Councilmember Aldrich's with I mean, my, I, I think one of the issues, Councilmember Aldrich, with, um, four and six is, you know, we've talked about having it be King County facing for dispatch, for racer, for all of those things. And those options don't seem to exist on the King County side. Like, so in order for us to kind of maintain the dispatch that we have, the, the racer thing, like, there's not an RFA on the King County side that we can join.
This is where you have your extra filter, filters, where you say, okay, which, which one of those criteria we need to meet in order for us to select?
Well, and mayor, I think you're describing, um, option five. There are no King County RFAs available to merge with, and that's why I'm like dead set against that one.
Cool.
And so option four would be partnering with another entity to form a new RFA.
Got it.
So it, it could still be King County facing.
Okay.
And like really deeply embedded in all of the King County stuff that we're already connected to.
But it would also necessitate a partner organization that was willing to do so.
To form an RFA.
Yep.
Not a partnership.
Yes.
Yeah. And so my concern with the partnership is that we might lose negotiating power, and that like rates are getting set for us, taxpayers don't have as much say. Um, you know, they're not necessarily able to vote on what another partnering agency does.
Totally. Which is one of the reasons that I asked originally about the different structures, the different orgs, and like, we could potentially have board seats on an organization, depending on which way that we went.
So how about if Mark and I go back and noodle on one, two, three A, three B, four and six? We're taking five off the table. Um, and come back to you probably in January? Um, that would be the goal. Cause I think we, we would need to come back for another kick at the can to get a little bit more information. Uh, this conversation's been super helpful, and I really appreciate all that you've done tonight. So thank you.
And one thing I really appreciate about study sessions is, I don't think I realized quite what a hand talker the deputy mayor is, until I was sitting right next to him and like having to watch his hands as he speaks. And he's like, can you do it like this, instead of this and that?
For the record, I could see his analysis that he was writing in.
Yeah, I, I mean.
My brain functions perfectly with that.
I have no doubt that there was a method behind the madness, and all those things meant something.
It's like the movie, you know, I was doing, with the, with the space.
Does anybody have a problem? Okay, I think we're cooked on this issue. Does anybody have a problem? Yeah, I mean, Tony's gone, so. Does anybody have a problem taking a 10-minute break before we do our last study session? Okay, it's 9:05. We'll be back at 9:15. I, I don't have the gavel, but, um, we're back. Um, and we have our last study session. Um, it's Agenda Bill 23202, a study session regarding capital facilities, human services, and utility elements.
Recording in progress.
Utilities elements. And I'm gonna kick it over to the city manager.
Thank you, mayor. And, eh, I think we, we got a good vision of projecting for future growth in our last study session, so it's a good transition. There was, I kept looking over at, eh, Community Development Director Greenspan's face to see if we were botching any, eh, any planning norms, but he, he seemed to be in not too much pain. Um, mayor, one thing I just wanna introduce, that while this is, eh, our last, eh, study session item, it's also, just for reference, the 203rd Agenda Bill that you've read this year. So if you haven't picked up on that, we do number in sequence. So it is the, the 203rd. And so that means, um, there's been a lot of work this, this year. I do wanna give a quick word of thanks, as they are working hard, um, to our city clerk and our deputy city clerk, Laura Hathaway and Robin Schaefer. Every, eh, every item, and then some that don't necessarily make it to fruition, goes through their hands to, to make this possible, so I'm thankful. But I also think it's very appropriate, too, that, then the, the topic that we're concluding the year on is one that if you think about, um, if we did a pie chart of the topics that do come to you, eh, there's a large couple pieces of pie coming from community development and public works tonight, and a growing one in human services. So I think it's a, eh, a great way of, of doing a capper. Eh, here tonight, eh, you're gonna be hearing, um, some introductions from our senior planner, Kirsten Matt, and then, eh, as well as an update from Sarah Frost, our community engagement specialist, and Boyd Bedson from our, eh, development and public works department. With that, I'm gonna turn things over to Kirsten to kick us off.
Thank you.
And then hopefully get to turn your microphone off.
Yes. Uh, so yeah, tonight we're talking about human services, capital facilities, and utilities. And this is the last time you'll see this slide. We're really getting to the, down to the wire with work this year. Um, we're continuing to work on existing conditions, and goals and policies review and revision. We're getting going on some of the early work for the environmental impact statement, and then starting to plan some of the ongoing engagement for next year. And then next year, so beginning of the year, um, we'll be coming back with a revision to the guiding principles, and that's gonna be based on things we heard from Planning Commission, council, our working group, and the public at various different events. We'll be getting our review on draft elements, which is very exciting, and review of the preliminary DEIS. Uh, we had a little bit of, eh, to time pushback for some of the timelines. So the, the open house we were hoping to have in March is more likely gonna be in late April. Um, that's just some adjustments we had to make with some of the modeling. Um, and then as you can see, we're just kind of working on continuing to draft the plan. This is obviously an early timeline. It's gonna be a lot of it based on when we have the drafts ready to go. We're hoping for a mid-April release on that, and that will also be released with the draft environmental impact statement, which comes with a 30-day comment period. And then hopefully, once that's up, we really wanna get going on the public hearing process with Planning Commission, probably sometime in May. So it's very exciting for us to get to that point. And then in terms of upcoming engagement opportunities, um, I will be, again, coming to the Civic Saturday session. This is the last one of the quarter, I believe, on January 20th. It's gonna be talking about civic infrastructure. And then again, second open house, this is looking more like late April, potentially beginning of May. Uh, we'll know a little bit more once we're getting kind of more down along the process and know when the, the DEIS is gonna be ready, cause we really want those to coincide, so we can provide some good information about what even is the EIS process, make sure people know where and how they can comment, and then also have the drafts available for the public. And then, again, ongoing activities on the website. This slide's getting a little bare, so we have tonight on here, and then, eh, my goal is to come back on the 17th to Planning Commission, talk about the principles, and discuss the proposed schedule that we have currently in place. Uh, one of the elements of the guiding principles is making it a more graphic document, so I'm meeting with our graphic designer this week to see if we think we can make that happen by the 17th meeting. If not, I might just get pushed a week, which would also push the council meeting a week. So just a heads up that you'll see that next year. And then for tonight, um, like city manager mentioned, Sarah will be giving us a little open house recap. Um, then I'll be, we'll be pausing for that to just have discussion and take questions. And then I'm gonna go through the human services element, capital facilities, and utilities. Um, just go through all those slides together. Boyd will have some additional comment after that, and then we'll get into discussion. So with that, again, we're not asking for anything specific, um, just getting feedback like we have been on these topics. And I will pass things over to Sarah.
Hello. Lovely to be with you again. Um, so, the open house. That was fun, right? We had a great time. I think that the open house was a really fun, oh, a mouse, thanks. Um, was a really fun way to talk about the comp plan, which can be a not-so-fun topic sometimes. It can just be really big and, and not, not that the content's not fun, but just that it's, can be overwhelming. Um, so we, our goal with the open house was to really break everything down into bite-sized pieces, um, so that we could look at it more closely and have people comment on things that they could actually understand. Um, so the engagement to get us to the open house, we did a number of different things to try and reach people where they were. Um, and this always needs more improvement, so we're aware of that, and we're, we're continually working on better ways to engage and more ways to engage, and what that engagement looks like. Um, but for the open house, we focused on digital engagement in the form of email campaigns, social media, posts and engagement, the use of the city website, as well as the Engage Bothell platform. We did some print. We did some posters that we had put up, um, locally, just around town. Uh, we did a citywide postcard mailer that went out to all addresses. At least that was the goal. Um, and then we also did some other means of engagement, including variable message boards. Thank you, Public Works, for the help with that. Um, those are those big scrolling signs on the side of the road. Um, we talked about it ad nauseam at Planning Commission and council meetings, telling folks where, where and when to be there. And then we also utilized our work group members, um, both just to make sure that they knew about it, and also to spread the word to their community groups as well. We had over 130 people attend the open house, which was just fantastic. It, it was an energetic crowd, and we had, eh, it was awesome. Looking back at the photos, it's, it's pretty cool. Um, we received primarily positive feedback from the community on the event itself, um, the provision of snacks, childcare, and also hosting the event in Snohomish County. So we hope to carry a lot of those things forward into the next open house and into additional, sort of how we look at events and planning. The table topics that we had there included the guiding principles document, um, and the visioning, parks, transportation, climate, natural environment, land use, human services and DEI, emergency services, and the transit agencies. Um, we were really grateful to have, eh, community transit and sound transit there with us. They said they had a great time talking to the community about upcoming changes and plans and future planning for the city and the surrounding area. Um, but what you'll notice is that most of these tables are also the elements that you all have been seeing. So that was, um, sort of our way of translating that into the event. And the really fun children's activity, it was about building your community, like how you build your neighborhood. And that was a, that was a really awesome activity from Imagine Children Museum. Yay! Uh, so the first theme we looked at, we're, we're kind of taking the feedback we heard onsite, the feedback we heard from the activities and the boards and the, the sort of questions we were asking onsite. We wanted to boil it down into a summary that, that ended up being kind of thematic. So this first theme we were looking at, we heard from the community that they wanted a balance of development and the protection of nature. So that looks like protecting existing tree canopy in critical areas, increasing quality green spaces through means like increasing biodiversity and creatively developing underutilized spaces into community gardens, or maybe microfood forests, taking green design standards for developments, and supporting electrification, eh, desire to increase infrastructure resiliency to potential climate and human-caused hazards, like natural disasters, or cyber and tech breaches, and public health emergencies. We also heard from the community that, um, they, oop, I'm using two mice. Here we go. Sorry. Pardon me. Um, maximizing mobility. So when, you can see part of the transportation budgeting exercise, it can't show the whole thing, but there's part of it there. We had a lot of participation here, and we were asking folks to prioritize what, like, basically tell us what's most important. And people prioritized categories, like 25% said walking was the priority, 21 said transit, 17 said safety, 15 biking, 11% driving and freight, 10% transportation resiliency and emergency response. And there was a general interest in increasing walkability, active transit options, and ease of use for transit through expanding trail networks, increasing biking infrastructure and bike lockers, pursuing smart growth and right-sized transit systems, um, and other types of multimodal transportation options. The third theme that we heard from the community was about advancing accessibility and affordability. So for things like supporting, um, support was voiced for DEI and human services programs with questions about how money and resources would be allocated. There was a desire for affordable and diverse housing choices, as well as possible renters protection. There's also a desire for programs and resources for people with disabilities, and an interest in expanding park amenities to include more things like water fountains, bathrooms, benches, as well as resiliency features, like shade and covered play areas. Splash pad came up a lot, and community events like concerts. So with all of that feedback we got, and some was very specific, some was very broad, I'm using the wrong mouse again, um, we basically wanted to, to share with you all that we, we really are using that feedback. We're using that feedback to guide the language within the drafts. We're using that feedback to clarify what the community's priorities are. And we're using that feedback, and those, the, the things that we heard directly from the community are gonna be influencing the implementation measures. So the, the, for anyone who is questioning whether or not we hear the community, we hear you. And we're always grateful to have that feedback and to have that input. Um, and we are actively putting it into the drafts for this comprehensive plan. So with that, if there are any questions for me, or for the team on the open house?
I do, I have two questions. Um, really, it's kind of fun to like look back through the photos and see kind of what it looked like more from a bird's eye view, because it was, it was very cool to be there in person and to participate. Um, and so thank you again for putting that on. I look forward to the one for King County. I think it's gonna be really, really interesting. Um, so my two questions are, um, do the Civic Saturdays events get linked on the city calendar? Cause I don't know if I've seen them on there before, but the city's taking such an active role, I'd love them to be there.
We did link the one in November. I don't think I've linked this next one, but I absolutely can. That's an easy ask and easily done.
Yeah. Um, that, yeah, you guys are involved. You're, you're participating. I'd love to make sure that, that the city, it's getting out to the city on the means that we have available. Um, I'm remembering back to the, eh, 2022 budget survey that council did. There was a lot of talk in that survey about balancing growth and balancing development. And there was not a lot of understanding on what people meant when they said that. Because it's pretty abstract, and I think that there can be a lot of different interpretations of what that means. Um, and so I saw on one of your themes is, I think theme number one was balancing development with protecting nature. And so that comes, comes up with me, eh, for me again. Um, do you think we now, like collectively, the city has a better idea of what the community means when we say balancing development, balancing growth?
I can speak to that a little bit, cause I know this came up when we were talking about the guiding principles, with this question of like, what do you mean, we mean by balance? And it, that same question actually came up with the working group, which I thought was really interesting. They sort of had that same feedback of maybe not necessarily liking the use of that term. And so I've been considering more terms sort of like, you know, when we think about the ecosystem, or the sort of holistic nature, or the harmony in the, you know, the, in the balancing. Um, so we are thinking about some different terminology, even in the guiding principles around that language, to try and get a, a better sense of what, what does that mean. And the working group, I think, really liked the term, like, like the term harmony, like working in harmony with each other. Um, so it's not sort of a give and take of one thing over the other, was the feedback we heard from them.
Yeah, and I'm really glad you have that work group for that kind of feedback. Um, uh, because I, I just think that, like, is it useful then to maybe, in some of the public engagement that you guys are doing, to ask, like, maybe an open-ended question of, you know, when, like, you indicated balancing, well, you know, balance whatever is, is a priority for you. Like, please describe what you mean by that. Um, because I think you're gonna find that there might be some kind of polarized views on what balance looks like. And, um, and so what one person thinks is balanced will be in direct opposition and, uh, total disagreement with another person. And you might find, I don't, there might be more than two camps. Um, and so I'm, I'm curious to, like, I think we owe it to our community to understand what people mean when they use the words that they use, and when they make the choices they, they make. Um, and so I know that I'd like to better understand that. And so if there is a way to get at that through your data collection, I would really appreciate it. Cool. Thank you.
I would love some sort of language that gets basically it grow in the way that has the least overall impact on the environment and on the natural environment, because it assumes the grow, because we have to. But it also makes sure that we protect the natural environment as much as possible, which we should, which we need to. So like, if there's some way to make that sound catchier?
I know I've done this before, but it was a great event. Thank you. And it was great that it was in the north part of the city, and the childcare was awesome. I have a very skeptical eight-year-old who loved it, and we both loved that he didn't have to follow me around the whole night, as I talked about maybe things that weren't super interesting to him at different points. Um, but at the same time, when he was with me, he loved talking to different staff about, like, he's a big, like, stormwater and, um, solid waste person, so he was excited to talk about those elements. And so it was just, it was a really great event. And people who didn't get the tote bags are now like, how do I get the tote bag? So, it's really good.
Yeah, I just wanna echo that that was a lot of fun. Um, even my very senior mom enjoyed it, and, you know, within her capacity, going around and exploring the tables and staff was fantastic. You had to put a lot of hats on for a big range of your audience, and you guys did a great job. And I'm hoping that for And I'm hoping that for when we do the King County people, that Snohomish County people know that they're welcome to come down and do a revisit as well. Because this King County person went up to the Snohomish County park.
The other thing that struck me about this is we're on the right track. Like the community just basically said, like, do the things that we're trying to do, which is really cool and really encouraging. Thank you, community.
All right. Well, if there's nothing, no other comment, we're going to say goodnight to Sarah so she can go home and go to bed.
Back to my bedtime.
And then Boyd Benson's going to join me up here for the next components. I'm just going to go through, I don't have a ton of slides for these, so just kind of going to go through them. Boyd will have some additional commentary afterwards and we'll kind of open it up for questions. So starting off with human services element, again, we're kind of rolling out our new little fun icons. So some recommended priorities that we've identified, and I did work with Anand in kind of developing these and making sure we're coordinating with that human services plan. That's very important to me that we make sure that what he's doing, what I'm doing kind of really mesh fall together. Obviously, the first thing is we're going to have a separate human services element, which we didn't have before. It was housed within housing, particularly given the level of complication of what's coming down the pike with the housing element. It really felt like it made sense to separate out and especially knowing that it is a new priority for the city. As we're doing with all the elements, we're reviewing against our racial equity and environmental best practices and some of the toolkits that we've developed thus far and are continuing to refine over time. Reviewing language generally, like we're doing everywhere, updating references to include the entire community. I think right now there's language around citizens, which is, we don't really have citizens, everyone that lives here and works here and hangs out here. We want to make sure the language is inclusive, addition of cultural competency when it comes to human services provision of and both our support of. And identifying transit accessibility is an important component of that. For capital facilities, in terms of just what even is it? I know it sounds like we were talking about a little bit earlier tonight, so I may not get into too much detail. It is one of the required elements. It's a little less sort of like a fun visionary element. It's a lot about just inventorying our facilities, forecasting our growth needs and making sure that we can meet those. It's not as specific as the capital facilities plan, the strategic plan that I think has a six year window, but it does allow us to kind of make sure we are thinking about that and making sure that we're not totally off track for that 20 year window. And it includes a lot. So there's water systems, sanitary sewer systems, stormwater, schools, parks, recreation and open space, police and fire protection. And then the comp plan covers transportation facilities, but the way that ours is organized is those are in the transportation element, but they are obviously very important. And we've been spending a lot of time in the last few weeks, meeting with different departments and divisions to make sure we're understanding the needs from those departments and divisions as we're working with our consultant team to help provide those forecasts. So some of the staff recommendations, obviously we need to update our existing facilities inventory. We need to assess our needs projections and identifying new projects that might need to happen to meet our needs based on the assumed growth that we have and our projections. As I believe we've recommended with some other ones, we want to look at kind of streamlining where feasible, there's a lot of kind of duplication between some of the elements, particularly like the parks element and the capital facilities element and the parks plan. So what makes the most sense to be in the plan versus the parks element versus the capital facilities element? So we want to be really intentional about what information is where and why. So that's another thing we've been working with the departments on to make sure, like talking with Nick, like what do you think makes the most sense to be in the element? Maybe that's a little bit more high level when we keep more of the actual physical inventory that's required in capital facilities. Because right, I think right now it's really kind of a duplication of the parks plan, which is also not super helpful because that gets updated at a different period of time. And so we don't want the comp plan to be kind of so woefully out of date, it's not really useful. So that's going to be a big component. Also, streamlining information related to utility providers that aren't Bothell. Similarly to the Prose Plan, they have their own plan to get updated and then get out of date and then our plan gets out of date. So what makes the most sense in terms of maybe we reference it, add some, you know, loose information, but really drive folks to go to the most updated information. And then for utilities, again, it's required by GMA. Similarly to the capital facilities element, it talks about existing and proposed utilities and capacity. We also need to compare this against future growth. There's modeling that's done with utilities, just as it's done with transportation. And we need to be able to show how we can accommodate future growth in our utilities infrastructure. Utilities covered include electricity, natural gas, liquid petroleum pipelines, telecommunications and solid waste. Again, these are, I believe mostly things that we don't necessarily control, but we work with providers. And then in terms of recommendations, obviously we need to update information as needed to address growth, working with agencies to streamline the text similar to capital facilities, like I mentioned, and making sure that that information that's provided is the most up to date. And then just a little bit of the feedback we heard from Planning Commission, they were very excited to talk about utilities, which a little bit surprising to me, but you know, to each their own. So they really wanted to encourage showing that there are important principles in the comp plan that do inform things that might be considered dry, like capital facilities and utilities. And so how do we kind of make that call back to show sort of how our values inform the way that we're thinking about capital facilities and utilities? There was some support for some language about EV charging infrastructure, electric vehicles. There was a question about the use of demand response in electricity that I will let Boyd answer if that question comes up again. And if that's something that we've thought about doing or not. They wanted to highlight too, how do we address community concerns about capacity? And I think there's a lot of folks that are concerned that we're running out of capacity about certain things, particularly utilities. And so a bit of sort of an educational component about what that means and what the actual sort of facts on the ground are. Chair Kiernan wanted to call out and recognize the ecology store and how cool that is that we have that and that that was a part of the agreement that we made with our solid waste services and think about, is that something that we could potentially make as a requirement in the future as we're going out for bids for other solid waste services? And he also mentioned there's some interesting sidewalk repair strategies in Kenmore right now on 73rd to help retain trees. So basically lifting the sidewalk up is like a platform over the, over the roots, which I looked up later and it looks pretty cool. So just another kind of fact that was called out. And with that, I'm going to let Boyd add in some information he wanted to talk about and then we will get into questions.
Thanks so much. And then this is just kind of to reinforce a few of Kirsten's comments through here. So one of the questions that could be asked are, why are the city storm sewer and water utilities in the capital facilities element? So when you think capital facilities, you typically think of facilities within a city owned and maintained by the city. And our utilities are owned and maintained by the city and they're, they've been purchased and paid for by our rate payer. So we wrap that in and then we add in the other utility districts to make it really clear what's what. What you'll see with this update is, as Kirsten mentioned, is a simplification. It really is, we don't need to be repeating how many valves we have and the rest. So you'll see a general overview of storm sewer water and you'll see reference to the plan because the comp plan is the overarching, you know, guidance for everything in the city. Now, when you think of level of service for sewer, water, storm, it may not have the same goals and ideas you might see in other elements, but protecting the environment. We can tie that to our utilities. We can consider inflow and infiltration within the sewer system and how that impacts flows that get to treatment plants and how that impacts huge sound. So we really like to tie those together. So while our sewer system is, you know, our level of service is dictated by Department of Ecology or water service is dictated by Department of Health, we can wrap all that stuff in. So when we think of resiliency, we can, we can tie that into utilities and it just makes it stronger because when you go for grants or for any other type of support, we can say, look, our comp plan says protect the environment. How is this project protecting the environment or how is it making more resilient? So we really appreciate that kind of synergy between the general goals you'll see elsewhere within the comp plan and the utilities element and the capital facilities element. Kirsten mentioned that in utilities, there are typically, when you think of power and communication, it's more reactionary. We need to provide these services, they're going to come in. But there are things, I mean, our infrastructure is aging with respect to electricity and there are, we don't know much about the van management that electrical facilities are looking at. So we'd like to address that and make sure that people understand that these things have to be updated and expanded to accommodate growth. And then the, the big part, once again, inventory is kind of in our comp plan or our comprehensive plans for sewer, water, storm. And we've talked about level of service, but it's the growth alternatives. There will be a baseline, as is status quo, what happens in the future. We already understand that because we've recently updated the water system plan and the sewer comprehensive plan and storm plans. And then there's a couple of growth alternatives. So we'll take that information, just like with transportation, and we'll model our systems. And what happens then? Okay. Growth alternative A is this, and we've identified that we need to increase, you know, capacity for the water system. We need to have more storage for reservoirs and we'll have that developed with a project list. It's a 20 year plan, so there'll be planning level estimates and projects, but we'll understand what each alternative means with respect to what type of mitigation we might need for the utilities. And you won't see as much detail with the dry utilities, the power, water, gas and communications, but it's still something that's addressed. So I think that's, anything else you think of? Okay, cool. Thank you.
I'll go. I was waiting for Amanda to cut me off. Oh.
Oh, I was gonna.
Oh, is she still here?
Did I say that out loud? Sorry. For a question about utilities, everything else seems very high level. I mean, the devil's in the details, but the utilities I had a question. So telecommunications, what is, is that just phone service or does that include at some point in the next 20 years, internet broadband?
It's a good question. So, I mean, 5G is just around the corner, right? We haven't seen many applications for that. So it is more, once again, it's planning level. So all we can really do is reach out to our utility providers and say, look, what do you think is going to happen? So if you're asking how it's going to change over time, yeah, we don't know, but, but we'll, we'll ask for.
I meant would it be a utility, not a fundamental, because like water and electricity, it's a utility.
You mean like municipal?
Yeah, municipal, yeah, sorry, thank you. Yeah, municipal. Are we ever going to take it on as a city?
Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
No, I did not say it properly, that's.
Yeah, I don't believe there's any discussions about that at this time.
Yeah, there's, there has been no direct conversation that I've heard. I think it, I'm thinking back to AWC Action Days when we were there last year together, that there were some conversations or sessions about that. I do know that a large internet company that starts with G has been having conversations in the region about broadband utilities, Google, sorry. That's right. Yeah. Gargantuan internet company.
Kyle realized he had to tell us because we were all just like trying to think of something else and not.
And, and there's, if that's something that the council is ever interested in pursuing, I mean, I think there's a large body of work. I did, like, I have some either information or bias based on just coming from a community that did do municipal broadband and saw the level of investment that it took to get there and also the opportunity that 10, 20 years from now it becomes a revenue stream. It was an interesting concept of it was a revenue generating utility, which is not usually what we try and do with public utilities. And so it had some different rules of operation. We were encouraged to wear logo wear and it was not called by the city name, it had a brand. So, and there's, so there's opportunities there and I will say too, that I'm thinking, I have some community critics in my, in my head right now who would remind the city council at every opportunity that more and more there's opportunities to provide internet services from the sky instead of from the ground. And so instead of getting into the city right away and tearing up streets, that if we wait five years, this could all look different. So I think from a comprehensive, comprehensive plan standpoint, it'd be, it's an interesting, it's an interesting question and thinking about how do we capture where an industry might be moving? And then thinking about where are there opportunities, like what do we want to see in terms of the city participation in that? Because there are opportunities that when you own something like an internet company, you get to also make decisions of who gets that as a service for free because otherwise they wouldn't get it and that sort of a thing. So there can be some great opportunities, but I do think that it's a, it's a volatile market that's going to change.
It may or may not be volatile. I'm just saying as a city, we provide services. If we talk about related human services or being equitable and then you are, we already are generating revenue from the water and sewer.
And I guess I meant in terms of the how it's provided. I think that I'm not here to suggest that we won't have internet.
And so since we're talking about the next 20 years.
Bless you.
Bless you.
You're all right.
Did you just call me a name under that? Yeah, I, in the next 20 years, it'll be a good conversation to have or something to say in the next 20 years, but then in 10 years, whoever's going to be updating this thing, you know, they'll say, oh, this is a bad idea, Rami said it, you know, so.
Once again, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the goals and policies, those can be shaped to help support, because we don't know what's going to happen, right? But if you have good goals and policies, you can help shape, we want to provide low cost service to all, or we want to do this, or we want to do that. So crafting those policies can, can, can provide flexibility to, to look at these options in the future.
I mean, yeah, you can partner with, it doesn't always have to be you go and buy all the infrastructure upfront. Today you can go partner saying, I want to buy this bandwidth or rent this bandwidth from you. Yeah, I know.
What about this one?
Part of our human services plan might be helping folks identify the programs that already exist that they can take advantage of if it's an access or a cost issue too. So I think it's all kind of interconnected in my mind.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd also like to point out that the city of Bothell is currently sitting at 98% subscription to telecommunications and broadband. So we're really, like, when we're talking about making it accessible to all, and this is a question I've talked to a city manager about before, is like, can we understand who that 2% is? What is the need? Like, what are the barriers? Because if, like, 2% could be an easy to solve for problem if we determine that it is a problem. Because what if that's by choice, right? Like, there, maybe there are 2% of our community who would just say, I don't need it, I don't want it, that's why I don't have it. And so providing it to them is not necessary. So I'm, I've been curious to understand what that is, just part of an equity thing. Seems like we're so close to like, where did I get that number? A news article sometime a while back?
Yeah, it's probably originating from census data or census data estimates, but that's something we could see if there's more ways to suss that out, I'm not sure.
I believe at one point there was a, a news article that was to the effect of like broadband coverage in Western Washington and Bothell was leading the region at 98%. Thank you, tech workers.
Another question, 20 years, are we going to have all Bothell residents covered by Bothell utilities? Or are we always going to have different parts of Bothell under different utility providers?
Yeah, so I can take that one. So what, the city's stormwater system covers the entire city of residents. There's a very low probability of having a sewer district or a water district that covers the entire city. And that's mostly because how we purchase water and where we treat our sewage. So, and there are also agreements and, and the rest with respect to our retail service areas, it would be hard to change. Sewer might be easier since Alderwood discharges to King County just like us, but for, with respect to water, it would be a much bigger lift since we get our water in King County from SPU and then the users within the north section of the city, that's, that's from the Everett Snow Public Utilities source.
So there are logistical issues that will make it very difficult, but administratively, can we take over or there will be also logistical issues there too?
I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but it'd be a very big lift. I mean, the retail service areas are dictated by, by Department of Health and Department of Ecology and it's, it's a process. So I'd say the probability is very low. Doesn't mean that if there are certain areas that, that are near the boundary that might be served better, that we can't take care of those issues and we're actively looking at, at addressing some of those issues.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. And that will affect probably the capital facilities plan and all that if, if we decide to go down there, which is not going to happen, but yeah, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
If there's no other comments or questions, I think we're probably good to go and thank you. See you next year.
Thank you.
Happy New Year in advance.
All right. On that note, the gavel's up there, but we are adjourned.